Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening and welcome to the City of Lincoln's regular meeting of the City Council. This meeting will be televised and available on cable channel eighteen as well as available via Zoom. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Greg Benzel from Grace Life Church. Once the invocation has concluded, Mayor Andriata will call the meeting to order.
Us and Lord, as we approach this meeting tonight, I just want to thank you for our City Council members and not just our City Council members, but all the city officials. Lord, we pray your hand would be upon them and give them wisdom for tonight and for the days to come. That our city might shine for you, Lord. I pray your grace, your protection upon all of our city officials, our police department. Lord, may you protect them as they protect us, our first responders, our fire department. Father be upon our upcoming school year. May your grace and protection be upon our students, upon our faculty, Father. And so, Lord, we just commit this time to you and trust your highest and best shall be done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate that. All right, we'll call the meeting to order at six oh two. Welcome, everybody, to the City of Lincoln, twenty twenty five regular meeting, City Council, Lincoln Redevelopment, Successor Agency, Lincoln Public Financing Authority. It is July twenty second, twenty twenty five. Pope, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Reedy.
Here.
Councilmember Pearl, absent. Mayor Protem Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Eklund.
Here.
Mayor Andriata.
Here, thank you. All right. My new friend Josh is here. Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? All you have to do is just start it and we'll follow you. It's right there where you're at. That's good. Yep.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, item seven, report from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no reportable action this evening.
Okay, number eight, agenda modifications. Are there anything on the agenda that the council would like to modify or move? All right, we have three presentations tonight. And the first one is a senior center project update by Jacob.
Oh, yeah. Is it on? I think so.
They'll turn it on for you.
Is that presentation showing at all?
No.
At the black screen, yeah. Save me, Roman.
Thank you for your patience. Those are watching on Zoom at home.
It's showing now? There we go.
Yes, there you go.
Okay, good. Thanks, everyone. I'm just giving a quick update on the Lincoln Senior Center project. It was a grant-funded project and a part of the grant closeout process is to just disclose the information and offer a period for public input. So this was a grant offered by the California Development Block Grant Program. And the purpose of these grants typically is for projects that are aimed towards low-income or moderate-income demographics. So the grant that we were awarded was put towards a project to specifically invest in our senior center. So our senior center is located on H Street and Fourth Street. It's, I believe it's actually a retired fire station that's no longer in use. So it's now used as a senior center. So this project specifically was to invest in some new outdoor facilities that correspond with the meal program that Seniors First runs out of the senior center. I'll talk a little bit more about Seniors First in a few slides. But yeah, what our project created was we ordered two prefabricated structures. One of them was kind of like a modified shipping container. I'll show a few pictures of it. It's kind of cool. Anyway, the point of this was we created a couple site improvements, hired an engineer and a landscape architect to do the plans. So here's a snippet from one of the plan sets just to kind of show what we got going on here. So this is the same picture. We were just looking at the same location, just with the aerial turned off. So in the top-left part of the screen, I'm not sure if I can point to it or not, but the mouse doesn't show. But anyway, this is where the meal pickup structure is. It's kind of like a, again, I'll show a picture of it, kind of cool. And then in the back, there is a large patio that was constructed, basically. And it has a prefabricated metal shade structure that goes over the top of it. So this creates a place in the back to host events or to just just to enhance the experience of the Seniors First Cafe that they run, that they run there. So here's a picture of, or here's a rendering, I guess, of the meal pickup structure. It's prefabricated. They made it in a shop and shipped it over. The actual color scheme that we ordered was more of a more of a tan color that matches kind of the aesthetic of the existing building there. But this is just a rendering of it. You can lock it up. You can open up an awning there. There's a counter that pops up. And again, this is to supplement the meal pickup program that Seniors First runs through this facility. The next one, it's, again, it's a shade structure. This is just kind of like an elevation of the side profile of it. It goes over the concrete patio that was created in the back. In addition to that, too, we ordered a bunch of new picnic tables that you can use in the back there. A little bit about Seniors First. Again, the whole point of this grant was to serve low- to moderate-income demographics, and that's what Seniors First targets. So they help with many they offer many different services. But again, ours specifically is to supplement the food insecurity aspect that Seniors First deals with. So they serve lunch at the senior center five days a week with optional you don't have to pay any money to go there to get lunch. It's, you know, optional donations. And again, there's a lot of community events that are hosted there as well. I think one day we were out there working and there was a bridge tournament going on in the building as well. So it's an important asset for our community. The status of the project, it's been done for quite a while. The only thing to do left, or the only remaining item of work is to assemble the shade structure. It was delivered on-site. We're just waiting to basically erect it. It's kind of like a big Lego set. You put it up. And just minor landscaping things as well. So again, this is a grant-funded project. This is kind of a breakdown of the different costs associated, the design costs, materials testing, construction, the two prefabricated structures. One challenge we ran into is the grant came with some pretty ambitious deadlines of when the project was supposed to be completed. The original deadline was October of 2024. But the issue that we ran into, again, is these prefabricated structures, they had to go through quite a long process of engineering, design, manufacturing, shipping. So we weren't able to meet that original deadline of October. The grant postponed their deadline to this March. And so we were able to they were able to ship the box pop construction on, box pop structure on time. But the shade structure was not manufactured in time to be shipped on-site and assembled within the grant performance period. So we will have a non-reimbursable cost of $24,000. That's going to, the city's going to have to pick that up. That's just for the labor to install the shade structure. So that concludes my presentation.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Yeah. This is really exciting. You're right, they do do a lot of events at the senior center. They come and do bingo with them regularly. And I actually, during COVID, I actually helped deliver the meals on wheels for several months, which was really great. So my question is, are they still delivering? Or is the meal pickup spot, the box pop, whatever that's called, is it? Are they just picking up now or are they still delivering? I'm just curious.
I can answer that.
Oh, perfect.
They are not, the meals on wheels still exists. That's still a thing. But primarily, people come to the senior center to pick up their meals. So, you know, at this moment, the shade structure will be of more value where people could come and go outside in the fair weather months to congregate and socialize because that is really a big part of that facility. It's not just providing the meals. It's providing that social aspect for seniors. And so the meal pickup would be something that we would put into place should we enter an era, another era, where it becomes more important that we social distance once again or that we just provide that alternative service.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great. Any comments or questions?
I was going to ask, with the $24,000 for assembly, not that we don't want to make sure it gets assembled properly, but maybe we could do a community service and have maybe one person that's super in charge that can take responsibility for it, yet have a lot of hands that
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
We're not allowed to do that?
We're not allowed to do that.
No, and it's, you know, it is a steel structure, right? This, it's not like, you know, you're a little, some sort of a tent structure that you might put up in your home. It is a permanent steel structure with big, heavy pieces. And so
I'll weld it together.
We will need equipment and a paid team. And I will say that the contractor that we're using, he's kind of given us a break on the price. And so we are allowing him to put that structure up when he has time in his schedule. And that was kind of the trade-off is I can cut you a little deal, but I need to fit it in between jobs. And so
Well, I'm very grateful for that.
Yeah, we're trying to save the pennies every way we can.
I just thought it'd be a fun community project.
Well, you know what, Mayor Protem Brown, your sentiment is well-received. But unfortunately, in the state of California, this is not the 1980s anymore.
Yeah, Paul.
And we're not really allowed to, in a lot of ways, to do where the community can just come together and volunteer for things. There's a lot of rules and regulations, which is a bummer, but so
Let's change it.
Well, okay. Maybe you could run for governor and create new laws. That'd be great. Yeah.
Put me in. Put me in, Coach.
Thank you for your presentation. We really appreciate that. And it's a wonderful project.
Thank you.
Thank you for staff for applying for the grant and going through all those steps and getting it done. It's, you're right, it is a great asset for our seniors. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Item nine B, we have an action review for the Moore and Stardust incident. Chief Mejia.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Anthony Mejia, Deputy Fire Chief. Tonight, I'm going to be giving two presentations. This first presentation is going to be an after-action review for the two vegetation fires we had within the city limits, the Moore incident and the Stardust incident. Also, I'm going to be giving another presentation on our Advanced Life Support Implementation Plan. So this review that I'm going to give right now is going to be a combination of some actual incident video with some audio mixed in, and I'm going to kind of walk you through each of the incidents.
Go to Lincoln.
Do we have any calls for a grass or structure fire? We have a dark column coming up behind Station Thirty-Four.
Confirm behind Station Thirty-Four.
Hey, something.
And you said a grass and structure fire?
We're not sure what type of fire at this time, but it is a darker column.
Engine Thirty-Four, Lincoln Fire.
Engine Thirty-Four.
Thirty-Four. Just got multiple reports of more to rent a progress fire.
Thirty-Four, copy.
Okay, so what you just heard is our first-in captain off of Engine Thirty-Four. They actually got the call, not through the normal 911 reporting parties. They actually saw the smoke showing up. So it actually gave us an early jump on the incident, so we're able to get there quickly. And as you can kind of see, the fire behavior right now, at this, what we're looking at, we think we can wrap it and catch it with the resources on scene. And we're going to hear Engine Thirty-Four. They're going to pull up on scene, actually, and kind of give their first-in size up, which is really going to guide the whole incident.
We're one acres by plastic fuel, fire rate is spread. Past the engine over there, past twenty, thirty. Trying to continue, he's talking. I'm going to have a saddle. More, I think.
So what that first-in company officer said is he said, hey, this fire is going to get possibly to 20 to 30 acres. When it starts, he's expanding on what the potential is of that. And so that kind of puts in our mind frame that there could possibly be a potential for structured threat. And so far, the fire at this stage, we really didn't think it had a big potential of getting into the structures. But what you're going to notice here in a couple seconds is two things are going to happen in alignment pretty close in the same time. We're going to have a wind shift that starts driving the fire towards the homes off of Marina Grande. And then we're also going to start getting into thicker, matted, down grass, which is going to make it hard for our firefighters to extinguish. So right at this point is when we started to hit a part in our incident where we realized real quickly that this was going to be a structured threat for all of those homes off of Marina Grande. Luckily, we've been training this season so far for this exact type of incident to get aircraft coming, to increase our resource requests. And that's exactly what we started to do. We realized that we weren't going to possibly be able to anchor and flank it. So we're going to try to have to get some aircraft ahead of the fire and get some drops in there to try to slow it down. And also, what we started doing was evacuating homes off of Marina Grande.
Go to Lincoln, right?
Lincoln, more. I think you want to reconcile my resources. Just want a total of three additional Type Threes, two tenders. If we can get also an engine for station coverage. We're going to be unified command with CAL FIRE. They're going to be ordering some aircraft to whiff the dozers.
Good question.
So that was Chief Vatus. He did a great job on that. That was exactly executed how we wanted it. We have aircraft coming. We know that we have all the evacuations. PD did a great job with that. Those were confirmed. And so we felt at this time that once that aircraft get on scene, we'd be fine. But actually, what happened was our ground resources were actually able to wrap this up, which we had a pretty large amount of fire on the ground. It kind of hit a different fuel mod, and we were able to slow it down. So it was a complete win from the side of a ground resource, and we'll hear the fire is going to get stopped.
More progress on this fire stop. I just want to confirm we have an engine in the city for coverage.
That's a fair.
So highlights are that this fire was stopped at 15.2 acres. We basically didn't allow it to get we stopped it at 15.2 acres. We had no structures lost. We had no damage to personnel, no equipment damaged at all. So it was a complete win. The units that we had assigned to this fire, it was a very joint mutual aid fire, which we had Lincoln, Rockland, Roseville, and then CAL FIRE on it with a high response with aircraft and dozers on the ground. So really, a great execution of good mutual aid, putting our stuff that we had in training and was able to get a good stop. This next fire that I'm going to go with is going to be the Stardust incident. This is going to be off of 193, and I'll play it, and I'll walk you through that one as well.
Brush Thirty-Three, and Battalion Thirty-Four. Respond to vegetation fire high at 300 Stardust Lane. Off streets are H 193 and McBean Park Drive.
So what you're seeing here now is this is going to be our first brush engine on scene. This is Brush Thirty-Four. They're making their way down Stardust. Stardust is a very narrow road. They've got active fire on the right side, but they have to try to make their way to the heel of the fire, which is at the very end of the cul-de-sac. This is actually one of our bumped-up engineer drivers right now, so he got some great on-the-job training. He's with one of our senior captains. But you're going to see the conditions that they have to drive through get pretty dicey to get to the heel. But it was a very great aggressive attack, which they had to do and make to get to the heel. And as they start pulling up here, this fire is actually located in our Village One contract area. So this is why this fire had a CAL FIRE unit that's on scene.
One to two acres, moderate rate of spread. Moving towards the north. Don't believe there's any structures right out in front of it. Continue response to, I'll be Stardust, I'll be on X-File, pack four. I believe it's D and I don't make a difference.
Copy. One to two acres, moderate rate, moving north. No structures on X-File, pack four.
So, yep, very fast-moving fire. It was kind of wind-driven. It did have a structured threat towards the tail end of it. Again, we've got, this was in the Village One contract. So what we ended up getting was that CAL FIRE high response right away off of dispatch, which made a big, big impact on the incident. We did multiple helicopter drops. You're going to see a little bit of a dozer line around it. And so the fire held, did it on the left side of Stardust is state responsibility area, and on the right side is ours. So it was kind of split down the middle. But again, this thing worked out exactly as planned. Held to 12 acres and no structures threat and no injuries. The units that were assigned to it, again, all of our units, and then a CAL FIRE high response. What I would say is that this was just a big win for us overall. We had two back-to-back incidents that really, I think, were very dynamic in nature. So a big shout-out to our firefighters who really put themselves in harm way and really slowed down the progression of that fire. Second was, I think, a big shout-out to our mutual aid partners for coming in, collaborating with us, and then also with CAL FIRE. Without CAL FIRE's air resources and their specialty resources, we would not have been able to get the stop that we did. Also, I want to thank Lincoln PD for the evacuations. They did a great job. Were with us in unified command of the command post. Brett Schneider was our drone operator for both fires, so he did an amazing job as well. So that's all I have for you, unless you have any questions or comments for those incidents.
Well, first of all, thank you. It was pretty crazy to have those two fires back-to-back like that. I heard from, you know, many concerned citizens about, you know, do we have enough police and fire and all that? And my message was how you handled those and with our mutual aid, which it needs to be said, too, that Lincoln goes to the mutual aid of all of our partners as well. It's not just us using them. We all help each other. But with all that combined, the fact that the way that you were able to put down both of these fires with no structure damage, with no injuries, is a testament to how you and Chief Alves and your teams have trained your men, your departments, how you have executed and the staff that we have now. Of course, as we grow, we need to add more. We know that. But I am super proud of the work that your team did and our partners coming and helping and that we didn't lose anybody's home. I know some of the residents in the evacuation site were a little freaked out. And we've had some communications about the property owners coming in, and they should have had that cut down, you know, because that's not ours. We don't own that. They should have had that done sooner. But I just want to say thank you and job well done. And I think the success of this goes to the work that all of you have done and the resources that we've allocated. And so I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I can only imagine that would have been a different outcome if we didn't have those additional firefighters that we had added to allow for city function as well as the fire.
Absolutely.
So although we want to keep them, we need to add more. And so we need to keep that in mind.
We're working on that. But yeah, thank you.
Well, from my perspective, I was thoroughly impressed. And I could see the Stardust fire from our home. And our neighbor's home was in direct line of the fire and was saved, thankfully. They were in the evacuation area, and we went to help them. And so I was actually on the ground watching everybody working. And it was so impressive, and we were all just moved with so much gratitude. My question would be, from my perspective, it was an A++ killer handle of the situation. And I don't think it could have been any better because of the results. But from your professional perspective, was there anything that your team or the other teams learned? Any takeaways that we could improve upon or focus on or do to prevent anything?
Yeah, so we, with every fire that we're going to do here within the City of Lincoln, we're going to do an after-action review. We do it within a department. So we just started doing that for our first session was this Monday. So I have a theory that, hey, we can learn something from every fire. Even a fire that went 100% perfect, there's something to learn. So, yeah, we had some big key takeaways, everything from command and control down to just tactics and stuff that we can always work on. So, but I would consider this a good A-plus fire over the sense that our guys did an amazing job in holding it to exactly the boundaries and the markers that we wanted it to hold to. But, yeah, there's always takeaways, and we're always going to try to improve and get better.
My last question was for some of the homeowners that I know. They were wondering, is there anything that residents can do to report? How do they report vegetation that isn't being managed in neighboring homes or properties?
I think currently, the system right now is just going through the city website and making it to the email or the normal, you know, general phone number. And it's running through code enforcement, and then it'll end up on our desk. And we'll try to work on what we can mitigate from that.
Okay, if it's county property, how is that handled in the unincorporated areas? Do you know? Do they have a similar process where it's reported to Placer County Fire, CAL FIRE?
I think if it ends up coming out, we find out somebody else's jurisdiction, and we'll just send them over that the same way. And then they'll end up finding the connection of whoever that is.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Well, from attending the Lincoln Rural Mac and also the Sheridan Rural Mac, they do have their own accountability for fire regulation. And the county keeps a very close eye on that with sending people out to their locations prospectively and making sure that they're in compliance.
Right, I was curious. I think I know how the Stardust fire started. Talking to one of the people out there, and you can verify or not. But do you know how the other one, the first one, started?
Undetermined at this time, and it's still under investigation.
Okay. And was the second one because someone was mowing, or is that?
Still undetermined and under investigation.
Okay. Right. Anything else?
Yeah, well done. Thank you.
Yeah, well done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And you're going to stay there because you're going to talk about BLS.
All right, and this is the Advanced Life Support Implementation Plan. This plan was kind of put into motion, I think, earlier on when the council first got together and started in the strategic planning meeting and was something that was put on the agenda for the fire department to start to get an ALS plan put together. So the thing I'm going to cover today is the objectives. We're going to explain why ALS service is needed. I'm going to describe the differences between ALS and BLS capabilities. I'm going to highlight some of AMR response challenges that is affecting our firefighters. And then I'm going to outline the ALS program components. And lastly, I'm going to detail our current progress and our next steps in implementing this plan. So why move from BLS to ALS? Main reason is, is that BLS is just not enough in critical emergencies, and it will delay advanced care, and it could cost people their lives. There comes a point where BLS skills just end up running out, and we really need to bring in ALS intervention to carry that care to the next step. And that leads to the next one, is ALS, it truly does save lives. The last two agencies I've worked for have been both ALS departments. And I can only imagine what it feels like being, having your skill set stopped at a certain level when we know that we could provide advanced care. And second is that it really makes us rely upon AMR as our only ALS provider. And with that is it really can sometimes leave our firefighters and our patients in a series of waiting, waiting for them to arrive on scene. And lastly is that with ALS capabilities, we're going to become better equipped to support our mutual aid partners. All of our surrounding agencies currently right now, between Roseville, CAL FIRE, and the county currently right now, between Roseville, CAL FIRE, and the county, and South Placer and Rockland, they're all ALS providers. So when it comes to mutual aid and we're exchanging resources, we're not really exchanging like resources. We have BLS engines, so when we respond into Rockland, they still send an ALS engine to come and cover it because we don't have that skills. I'm going to highlight on a couple of these, but this is really the big differences between BLS care and advanced life support. When it comes to airway, there's limitations that we have that we can't do innovations. We can't find good feedback whether we're hitting airways correctly and getting that response back. The really big one is for cardiac arrest or heart attacks. We're very, very limited in that. We can't really have real-time monitoring of what's going on with the heart. The new monitors allow us to even see if somebody's actually having a heart attack, where the block is located. We can also help and intervene with different types of rhythms, slow rhythms, fast rhythms, and we can apply different sorts of shocks for different-sized people. And so it really gives us that ability. The next three, between seizures and allergic reactions and pain management, really that comes down to the medications that we can push that can make a big difference in those people's care at that given time. And really, it can come from anything, from just calming them down to getting their vital signs under control, where we can be in situations where these smaller emergencies can turn into bigger problems without just that ALS care. And lastly is respiratory. That's really one of our big ones as well. For asthma patients, we just don't have that medication that could be very simple to administer, and then also that advanced airway skills that we don't really have currently. So one of the things I wanted to bring to light is, and I have gone through this down in Southern California, is AMR is our number-one ALS provider. They're our ambulance company as well. And with that, what we've been noticing so far within the City of Lincoln is an increased response time. And so this is something so much that we are actually going out as the county for, as a group for RFP, for a different ambulance provider to come in, and we're kind of allowing that to be an option to see what is the best care. And so what this does, this kind of leaves our firefighters in just that bad position of being on scene and being limited in their scope of skills. And AMR is really staffed with a couple of problems. They have a staffing shortage, which is due to a lot of the paramedic people that are not available due to their pretty hot commodity within the fire service. So that leaves them with a pretty big staffing shortage. So they're having trouble getting paramedics. Same with the fire service, we're having trouble getting paramedics as well. But then they have another problem that's kind of really expanding, and that's their hospital wall times. So everybody's call loads, as these cities grow, Roseville and ourselves, as we grow, we're sending more calls into these local hospitals. Well, these local hospitals can only handle so many patients at once. So what it requires is the ambulance end up stacking outside and they get stuck outside and they can't transfer care into the ER. So we'll have extended periods of times where these ambulances could have wall times upwards of four hours, which ties up our ambulances that are on scene. So with that being said, we really are relying upon them to come here and provide that ALS care. And so this is just something that we want to have in our horizon of knowing that we would want to start to get ALS so that we can provide that care on scene and stabilize those patients and not wait for AMR. Some of the key components that it's going to take for us to create a program is, first is we have to get accreditation from SSV. That is Sierra Sacramento Valley EMS Authority. So they're the ones that kind of oversee fire departments and all other EMS agencies and providers within the county of what we need to do to get accredited. So we've already had a couple of meetings with them and we're working towards meeting some of those accreditation criteria. Next is getting ALS equipment and medications. We'd have to have a full stock of that, restock, and so we're looking at what that would cost and what that would take for us to manage. Next is we have to start coordinating with the ambulance providers, let them know that our level of care has changed. Same thing with our cooperators. We have to obtain some licensed paramedics, and then we have to create an ongoing training and quality assurance program. So what are our first steps? Lincoln right now is currently taking the first steps towards, working towards that SSV EMS accreditation. We're looking at purchasing ALS equipment, even though we're having some financial restrictions. We're looking at trying to see if we can find some grant opportunities to make this happen. Next is we're really collaborating with our surrounding agencies and we're looking for any sort of regional best practices, something maybe we can piggyback on as we're first getting going, so we're not having to create this big program on our own. We're working on creating an operational and training plan. And lastly, we've been working with HR and trying to prepare recruitment for our first time for paramedics for the City of Lincoln. So that's where we're at currently with everything to bring you up to speed with our ALS plan, and I'll be happy to answer any sort of questions or concerns you have.
Thank you, Chief. Will you go back to the last slide so I can think of all my questions? Okay. I'll let the council ask any questions first, and I have a couple.
Super excited about this. I think I'm also excited that we're able to do it in this increment way and get started now. You had pointed out the ambulance is stacking for up to four hours. So that sounds like something that this won't solve, or is it just preventing them from getting on the bus in the first place? How does, how do we solve that problem? Because it won't do any good. Like, we can treat them on-site until the ambulance gets here, but then they're still waiting for four hours. That's another problem we have to tackle.
So what I have found in my experience is that those response times are going to go from five to seven minutes to 45 minutes. You're not going to wait the four hours, but the reason why those response times are going to be in that 45-minute window, they could even get to that hour window, is because of those wall times. So really, we're looking at a period of time from the time that the firefighters get on scene and be able to hold care for about that 45-minute mark. Yes, they're going to be delayed by the time they get to the hospital to actually see the doctor, and they're going to triage once they get there. But really, what it ends up doing is, you know...
You just need a bridge.
Yes. We need the bridge in between, and we just don't want to be stuck on scene with our firefighters having to have their hands tied when we could be doing advanced care.
Yep, 100%. Thank you.
I just, I appreciate that you're looking into this as I've taken advantage of you guys' care more than I would want it to, but knowing that one time that I had to wait for an ambulance totally makes it, makes sense to have this. And knowing that I've had to go through that process and the wait time that the ambulance had at the hospital and all that, I completely understand. So I'm grateful. And if there's anything else that we can do as a council or community to maybe brainstorm and come up with a way to get the funds that you need, let us know. We're here.
So question about funding, and this may be a question for you, Chief. Is there money available in the Public Safety Foundation for that or not?
Not to this level, no.
Well, that's a bummer, but okay. Then my other question was, so are we, are we going to hire, I think you said on your slide, that's why I wanted to go back to your slide, hire additional staff that are already paramedics, or are we going to train some of our firefighters to be paramedics?
Correct. So currently, right now, we have strategically left open three firefighter vacancies because of the same thing. If we hire on firefighters, we're not trying to add on extra staff. We're just trying to bring those firefighters up to a paramedic level. So the overall arching plan of this might take a couple of years to actually get all three engines up and running. So the main goal would be to get one engine running ALS essentially located within the city, and right now we have the openings to make that happen. So it wouldn't be an extra addition amount of firefighters. It's just really a skillset that we're looking to do. Then those existing firefighters on the two other engines, we'd be looking at trying to send them to school and get them accredited through paramedic licensing.
And then, thank you for already starting the process of getting the accreditation for the department. How long will that take, do you think?
Well, it's going to, it really is going to gear on the fact of once we get the paramedics. So I would say that's really kind of the big key, is once we get the paramedics and we have them here, we have to get the equipment, we have to get the cash. So realistically, if everything went as fast as possible, I mean, I think we could have an engine up and running in about a year, but it's going to take that long to kind of get the program up and going.
Sure, yeah. Well, I know that this is something that we've wanted to do for a long time. So I really appreciate you spearheading this and starting the process. And I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head. Is this something that was in our budget that we just approved to start, or is it something we have to come back to?
Some of the basics are in there, but when it gets to the point of actual dollar figures for hiring on these new folks, we're probably going to have to do amendments to the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We're very excited and we're here to support.
100%.
Yep. And then I think pretty soon we won't have to call you deputy chief.
Right.
Yes. Very soon, yeah. All right. We're moving on to public comment. This is the time where members of the community are allowed to make a public comment on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, which means that we always want to hear your thoughts on things, but there are some things that just we have no control over. So let's try to keep those two things that we do have control over. All speakers will have three minutes unless extended by the mayor. All comments or questions should be addressed to the mayor, and in most cases, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item, not appearing on the posted agenda, but we may engage in a brief discussion depending on what it is, provide direction to city staff, or schedule items for further meetings or future meetings, excuse me. And I do have two cards. And the first one is Mr. Stan Nader.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Stan Nader and I reside in the 12 Bridges area. I wanted to give you an update on the issue that I raised a month ago at this meeting. Last Thursday, I sent an email to the city manager to share with him some issues that came up as a result of this issue. And unfortunately, he didn't have an opportunity to respond because I just had a brief conversation with him before the meeting. He said he was ill and couldn't, didn't have an opportunity to respond. My sprinklers have been working fine since the meeting. The day following the meeting, the city water department person came out, told me they had made an adjustment to the system, and so that seemed to fix the issue. I hope that he will share the email with you because it's fairly lengthy and I don't have time to give you the whole email, but I did want to share with you the conversation I had with the water department person, because he said that they were... One of the issues is that they've been trying to push water to the west side of the city, and that's causing issues for the upper part of the system. He also shared with me that a majority of the water staff is new. And I said, "What happened with the previous staff?" And he said, "Well, they retired." And I said, "Well, did the previous staff download the, to the new staff, how the system operates?" And he said, "No." And to me, that's an operational oversight and a potential reason why I was having issues with my system. So I spent over $500 with my sprinkler maintenance person that I probably didn't need to spend. So I'm hoping that you will address this issue before any future issues come to the forefront, because as I said at the last council meeting, you cannot continue to add housing to this city without making improvements to the water system. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Susan Nailway.
Good evening, everybody. This is my first time at a city council meeting, so I hope I do it correctly. The reason that I'm here is I live in Sun City. We, it is my understanding through a couple of different meetings that I've been to that we have one dedicated traffic officer for Lincoln. The other officers do some, but that is not their primary job. Officer Schneider, I've met him several times, and now I understand he's a drone operator for the fire department as well, our one dedicated traffic officer. We are having a lot of problems with speeding in Sun City. I've brought up, asked for a stop sign so that we can safely exit our neighborhood. That was determined to not be appropriate. We don't have good traffic control. We have people running stop signs and doing over 50 miles an hour and 30 mile an hour zone regularly. It's frustrating. It's scary, and I'm really afraid somebody's going to get killed. My question to you is, or before I ask that, I understand that there's been grants for vehicles, that we have multiple vehicles, but we do not have officers to drive them or patrol in them. And so I'm asking for you guys, as we continue to grow with Esplanade and Turkey Creek and 12 Bridges and, I can't remember the one up on the top of the hill, there's two going in up there, we need more traffic control and traffic enforcement to keep our citizens safe. My question is, is there a plan to add more traffic officers for Lincoln as we expand?
Thank you. I think the answer is yes, but I'll let Chief speak to that.
Yeah, it's just all dependent on overall staffing. So as we add officers, yes, that is a priority to add officers to our traffic unit. So just need the bodies. Yep.
Sometime in the next year or two, hopefully?
That is a much larger conversation that would include council and finance and where we can find the money for the staffing.
I understand there was a grant written for a new motorcycle when we have it, but we don't have anybody to ride it. We have extra vehicles and a truck, nobody to drive them. So that's my request, and I hope that it will be considered. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else in the council chambers that would like to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda? Mr. Chapman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and those here as well as watching at home. First of all, I want to piggyback what Mr. Nader had pointed out. I live probably less than a half a block from where he lives, and during this entire last week, I've noticed that when I turn the hose on full blast, I'm like, "Where's the crink in the holes?" And there isn't any. So what he's going through, I too am going through, and I talked to two of my neighbors, and they're having that as well. So it isn't just his location. It's pretty much everywhere where we are. My reason for coming up this evening, though, is I'd like to find out who the city ADA coordinator is. Now, I had to, I had an issue that I wanted to talk to them about. So I get onto the internet and I look up the city and I'm like, "Okay, there's no name there, but you're supposed to send this in to whoever at that address or that email." And I'm like, "Hmm." And I've been around a little bit, and I've dealt with these evaluation transitions plans. And so I did a little research, and just to make a comparison, at least to show where we are, Rockland and Roseville have exactly what the ADA requirement states. It is a fact that you should have an ADA coordinator. I asked to, I looked to see if I could find anybody on the ADA Advisory Committee. Couldn't find that either. So I go to the ADA Evaluation Transition Plan. The most recent one is December of 2018, which looks like we're pretty much rolling around to find out what has been completed since then. So I go to the ADA Evaluation Plan directly. Absolutely amazed. Here I am on page five of the beginning of the program, and the ADA coordinator as of December the 18th to the current date is Mr. Ray Leftwich. Wow. Phone number, address, his name, ADA coordinator. That doesn't exist in the City of Lincoln right now. So I'd like to find out who's watching the store, because right now, that isn't happening. It's a good thing I showed up tonight, because up until now, it's not working, and you guys are supposed to be looking at the ADA Evaluation Transition Plan? I shouldn't have to be the only person doing that, but apparently I am. But I'm doing it for everybody. What you don't realize is that someday, one in every five in this room will be in an area where they are disabled, not able to do many, many things, whether it's arms, legs, head, whatever it might be. I don't want anybody to have to knock on that door, but when they do, it would be nice to know that you could go and find out who and what, because Rockland and Roseville, they seem to have it together. And this is a requirement. It's just not a "like to do." It's a requirement. It's a federal civil rights idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to that?
Sure. I think actually Mr. Chapman has probably interacted with our ADA coordinator a number of times. His name is Will Foot. He's a chief building official. And also, we are very well aware of the ADA Transition Plan and our requirements for having those completed. In fact, we have a currently adopted and compliant one, and we're up In fact, we have a currently adopted and compliant one and we're up for review of a, we have to do a new one. I think it's five years? Every five years and we're in the middle of that now. So essentially, if you don't know what that is, you go through all of your public facilities and you identify the areas where your, usually infrastructure improvements are substandard based on the ever-changing ADA laws and then you add them to a list and prioritize those and fund projects to address them. And in fact, in addition to all of that, you may recall your council meeting, two, three meetings ago, when you approved a budget, there was a significant amount of money in there for roads and other public facilities that included ADA improvements. So stay tuned.
So just curious, the documents that Mr. Chapman was mentioning, is that just an update on the website?
It could be like an old page that was never updated, but we'll get that taken care of. It should be very clear that Will is the ADA coordinator.
He's on the website as the ADA coordinator? Okay, great, and then we can just remove the old things?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure which page that is, but it could be a sub-page of engineering, but it should be all correct and Will should be.
Thank you.
I think what he's referencing is actually the ADA transition plan document itself, which was drafted when Mr. Lefwitch was in fact the ADA coordinator. So he's identified as having participated in creating that report.
Thank you. I had no doubt, but it's good to know that. We do have our stuff together, just like Rockland and Roseville. But I appreciate Mr. Chapman's comments. Anybody else have a, yes, sir, someone up to the mic, please? Hi.
Here. My question is, I'm concerned about the Level Ranch project. It's take a while before it might be developed. And it's a fire hazard. There's a lot of trees and brush and it's dry vegetation. And we live right there on top. We see the fireworks happening during the Fourth of July. We're concerned that some rocket or something might come in there or start a fire. So I'm wondering how the fire department would be able to reach that area? Can I see the roads or anything over there that could stop a fire?
Thank you for that question.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, that's part of the public hearing?
Yeah, it is, but I don't, I think he's just talking about the condition it is right now, not the actual development. So I don't have a problem with Chief Meehan answering that question.
All right, sorry.
No, that's okay, thank you. I thought that too, but I was tracking with his comment.
So is your question how we would reach that fire or how we would mitigate that hazard?
Yes, I haven't seen any roads or anything over there for access to vehicles, so I'm not sure how you'd be able to do that.
So we have a couple tactics. We would either cut line, which is make our own like little pathway there, or again, use aircraft depending on how far out it is. Those are the, yeah, those are the two options.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online? No? Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll move to item 11, our consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull or have questions on? Nope. Is there any item that anybody in the public just has a quick question about? We're not going to pull it, but if you have a question? Nope. Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
Call please.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes, thank you. All right, looks like we have three public hearings tonight. The first one, item 12A, conduct a public hearing and adopt resolutions approving the tentative subdivision map for the proposed Level Ranch project and waive full reading and introduce by title only an ordinance approving a development agreement between the city of Lincoln and Carroll S. Level Living Trust and French Monde Family Living Trust. So Michaela, hello.
I've had heels on, so that was a bit low. All right. Perfect. Good evening, council members. Michaela Noble, Associate Planner with this Community Development Department. The project we have before you tonight is the Level Ranch project. This presentation is just a summary of the information that was included in the staff report, so more detailed information is provided in that document as part of tonight's agenda. Tonight, we'll discuss the following items pertaining to the Level Ranch project. The requested entitlements, the previous planning commission meeting, project components, staff findings, environmental determination, and recommendations. The applicant, John Moyer Construction, is requesting to approve a large lot tentative subdivision map and a small lot tentative subdivision map, certify an addendum to the Village One specific plan environmental report, and adopt a development agreement for the Level Ranch project. In June, the planning commission held a public hearing and recommended that city council approve all entitlements related to the Level Ranch project. The proposed project consists of approximately 241 acres within the Village One specific plan. The project site is located in the southeastern portion of Village One. Other approved Village One projects include Esplanade at Turkey Creek, Turkey Creek Estates, Auburn Ravine Estates, the waterfront, Hidden Hills, Heartland at Hidden Hills, and Stardust. Here is the proposed large lot tentative subdivision map for the Level Ranch project. Like I previously stated, the parcel is approximately 241 acres in size and is being proposed to be divided into large parcels based on varying land use areas to allow for financing and phasing purposes. Here is the proposed small lot tentative subdivision map for the Level Ranch project. The map features 1,050 residential lots, 40 open space lots, and eight park lots. There has been a slight modification to the map since the agenda was posted last week. Previously... Oh, there's a laser pointer now? Ooh, we can't see that. This is a new clicker. Previously with Lot D that's located in the southwest portion, it's one of the parks. There's a trail that essentially kind of cut off at that point. It actually continues west all the way to the western property line and cuts north all the way into the open space area located in the middle of the map. So just a slight tweak, unfortunately, we weren't able to update the agenda to include that. The majority of the site would be designated as Village Low Density Residential, covering 168 acres. Approximately 13 acres would be designated as Village Medium Density Residential. Residential lot sizes range from approximately 2,800 square feet to 18,000 square feet. Oak Tree Lane and Level Ranch Road will provide primary access to and through the site, bordering the northern edge of the southern portion of the project. Two north-south roads will provide primary access within the southern portion of the project. The project satisfies the city's minimum lot size, minimum lot sizes and typical setback requirements. All lots backing up to county lands are subject to higher lot dimension minimums and increased setbacks in order to create a buffer between city development and rural county lands. With this map, the applicant has provided alternative site layouts. The first one's involving the southeastern corner of the site. Depending on if there's any development interested in the southeastern portion of the Village One area, which is not yet annexed, there is an opportunity to kind of extend a couple cul-de-sacs in order to gain access to those parcels. There's also a potential street connection in the medium density residential portion of the site, which is located in the northwestern portion above Oak Tree Lane. There's an alternative roadway connection that would connect to the parcel north of this project. This project is proposed to be developed in three phases from west to east. The proposed project provides for 923 Village Low Density Residential units and 127 medium density residential units for a total of 1,050 units. The park, the project includes approximately 40 acres of open space, nine acres of parks, which include two, three acre parks. All parks are proposed to be located along the trail system. The subdivision's trail system will connect with trails planned throughout the Village One plan area as well as the Catavadera and Sunsetty, Lincoln Hills communities through a connection point located along the project's southern boundary. Just to reiterate the open space and trail system, we have this graphic here. This has also been updated to include the new trail as well. Just to run through it a little bit, the light green area are the areas that are designated as open space. The mintier green are the park sites and the orange lines running through the open space are all the proposed trails. We have some, we have two connections to Oak Tree Lane, one along the western property line as, and in the northeast corner of the top, I guess, the top of the project, also connects to Oak Tree Lane as well as to the Stardust Trail system. We have a connection to the Hidden Hills project along the western property line and we have the southern connection to the 12 Bridges community located in the southeastern corner. As illustrated by the table, the acreage for each land use would vary slightly from the adopted specific plan. The Village One specific plan requires adoption of a development agreement for each project, which delineates the obligations of the developer and the city. The development agreements rely on the Village One Infrastructure Financing Plan to implement infrastructure development. The development agreement vests the right of the developer to develop the project and subsequent entitlements as approved. The DA runs with the property and is applicable even if property ownership is transferred. The term of the development agreement is 20 years after the effective date. Staff analyzed the proposed entitlement requests and concluded that they are consistent with the goals, policies, and intent of the city's general plan, the Village One specific plan, and general development plan in the city's subdivision ordinance. As required by the California Environmental Quality Act, city staff and consultants reviewed the project to see if the development would increase the severity of any impacts identified in the Village One EIR or created any new significant impacts. Because the Level Ranch project would not increase the population of the specific plan beyond the levels that were previously identified in the Village One specific plan EIR, impacts in areas related to project growth such as increased travel, vehicle miles traveled, increased vehicle emissions and traffic noise, they would essentially be unchanged. As shown in the table previously, the project would increase the amount of open space assumed for the Level Ranch project area, which would result in a reduction in the impacts associated with ground disturbance. Furthermore, Level Ranch will need to implement all applicable EIR mitigation measures, which are included as part of the mitigation monitoring plan. All of this is documented within the addendum that was prepared for the project and included as part of the staff report. Because the project would not create any new significant impacts or make any impacts more severe, we concluded that the Village One EIR adequately addresses the impacts associated with the Level Ranch project. City staff has prepared conditions of approval for the large lot and small lot tentative subdivision maps to ensure orderly and timely implementation of the project. Standard and project-specific conditions of approval have been applied. The conditions of approval also include the mitigation measures as outlined in the Village One EIR. All conditions will be subject to verification by city staff. It's recommended that the council adopt a resolution certifying the addendum to the 2012 Village One specific plan EIR, adopt a resolution approving the large lot tentative subdivision map for the Level Ranch project, adopt a resolution approving the small lot tentative subdivision map for the Level Ranch project, and lastly, to waive the first reading and adopt, and introduce by title only, a development agreement for the Level Ranch project. And tonight, we have our environmental consultant, Adrian Graham, here for any environmental-related questions as well as members of the applicant team. Thanks.
Great. Any questions from council before we open the hearing? I have one. When you were talking about traffic and impacts and all that and you said that it was determined that it would not be more detrimental to them, what? To the general plan or to, what is it being compared to?
So with the comparison, it goes back to the original environmental impact report that was adopted for Village One. We are aware there are going to be traffic impacts in certain places in the city, but the council at that time had adopted the statement of overriding facts in consideration that essentially acknowledged that it is a significant unavoidable impact and that the project can proceed even if that's the case. So this project doesn't exacerbate or make that situation any worse, it's not more severe, so we're able to proceed based on that previous adopted, adoption.
Okay, thanks. All right, go ahead.
On that note, when the EIRs, so it was done back in 2012.
Correct.
So when we're evaluating the Village One EIR, does that take in consideration the county development and Bickford on Sierra College? Or is that a separate study? How does that work with county property versus our development?
I will defer to our environmental consultant on that. She was integral in the development of the EIR, so she would know for a fact if Bickford was included in that as well.
Yeah, and in particular, the traffic impact too.
Hi, Adrian Graham, environmental consultant. And as Michaela said, I prepared the EIR both in 2012 as well as the addendum. So when we do an EIR, we look at two conditions essentially. We look at existing conditions, which is what's out there today and what happens when you add the project to it. We also look at cumulative conditions, where we look at what the anticipated growth is, both in the city and outside of the city, and how adding the project to that growth would affect traffic air quality, et cetera. So my recollection is that when, even in 2012, Bickford Ranch was already proposed. And so we look at, when we set up the traffic analysis and the cumulative analysis, we look at not only projects that have been adopted, but also projects for which applications have been submitted to the jurisdiction. In this, in the case of Bickford, it would have been Placer County.
Okay, so just to drill down on that a little bit, and I honestly do not mean this question to be adversarial at all. I'm just trying to understand. Explain to me the process of when you're taking into Bickford and other projects and then you want to add 1,050 homes. How does that not significantly impact the traffic in that area? Tell me how you get to that point.
So when the traffic analysis was done in 2012 and actually updated in 2022 for the amendment to the specific plan, it looked at adding the entire specific plan development, so the 5,300 units, not just these 1,000 units. And as Michaela said, there was a finding that there would be situations, intersections, where you would have a LOSD or worse that it... And then where it was possible to identify mitigation, the EIR did that as well. And then that mitigation measure, where those measures were considered feasible, presumably got amended into the PFE. The 1,000 units that we're talking about today are under the umbrella of that 5,300 units that we originally looked at. So what our conclusion is in this addendum is that because those 1,000 units were part of that bigger project and that bigger project was analyzed and the benefits of that project were determined to outweigh the impacts, significant unavoidable impacts such as certain intersections operating at LOSD or worse, this project would not make the impacts any worse than identified in the 2012 EIR or the amendment. That makes sense?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
I had a quick question on the, I know that based on the original layout in 2012, we made a change, or there was a change in the road.
Yeah, in Oak Tree Lane.
Exactly. So how does that impact, change that, being that it's not any longer going to that intersection where Bickford is?
So in 2022, when we looked at the specific plan amendment to allow Oak Tree Lane to be looped up and then Sierra College Boulevard, where there was no longer Oak Tree Lane connecting directly to Sierra College Boulevard, that shifted, it, it, traffic changed along the, the segment of 193 between Oak Tree Lane and Sierra College. It, and then of course, between Sierra College and south. So the, there was a traffic analysis done at that time. And so the city council adopted the amended specific plan, made findings that with the supplement, supplemental EIR that was prepared, that the, again, benefits of the project outweighed the costs. Now I'll point out that we didn't have any new significant impacts with traffic, but we did have a significant impact with noise and that was addressed and mitigation was identified, et cetera.
Perfect. Who else's mitigation for the noise?
The mitigation measure for noise impacts on 193 and Sierra College Boulevard is to use... So what happens is when you add a lot of traffic on those segments, it, for the adjacent houses that were existing... it, for the adjacent houses that were existing, the noise levels exceeded the threshold that we identified. We actually had that impact in the 2012 EIR, but for different segments. When we redirected traffic, we added a couple of segments. Mitigation is to use a noise attenuating asphalt such, there's these rubberized asphalts and whatnot that can actually reduce noise levels by more than the increase that you would see. So that mitigation actually would adequately offset the impact. But those two segments are outside of city jurisdiction, the two new segments that we looked at. And so in Placer County and in Loomis. And so we found that the impact was significant and unavoidable because the city cannot compel the, those jurisdictions to use that mitigation measure, but that the city can, you know, recommend to, I think it's actually SPARDA for the one, that they, they do implement that.
Thank you. All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any testimony on this? Go ahead, Mr. Frazier.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Tony Frazier. I was Frazier Design Group, representing Level Ranch Project. We have with us here Ryan with JMC Homes and Carol Levalle. She couldn't be here. She's not feeling good, but I believe she's online. I'd like to start by thanking you for listening to us and, you know, being here tonight. We've been looking forward to this project to get in here since maybe 20 years. It's a long time, but I really want to start by thanking staff, you know, they worked hard with us. This is a not small project, although it is within Village One. We're following everything plus, but it takes a lot to work through it and make sure we have a project more than what was envisioned. You know, that's the goal always to get one step ahead. So we're excited and thank you, Michaela, for taking all of my thunder from the presentation. So I'll focus on a few things. She always does a good job. But everybody here and staff, if I don't mention the name, from SP to ITA to Vin, we really thank them. And Sean too, the city attorney. So we really got a lot done. You know, it seems a long time, but it is really short time from the time we really pushed forward. But the Level family can testify it's been a long process, including waiting on general plan and specific plan and so forth. And then economy and people coming in going, and here we are. One other thing I want to mention on specific plan, because it's good to mention, is that, you know, the unit we have in Village One, you know, some of you may be here if you're in a long tenure, but many are not. When Village One was done, really downtown Lincoln was brought up a lot. So when we envision Village One, we're envisioning customers for downtown. So if you take your time and research in Village One, there were some rules, regulation, we had to do studies, and what we call it not to cannibalize downtown Lincoln. So that's why we have limited commercial allowed and within Village One. So you have to look at customers. I'm working on Ferrari Pavilion. Hopefully, we're getting close to get that going. Every time we're talking to tenant, they ask me to count how many units are being built, proposed, because, you know, they will not build without those units. So that's very critical to mention. I do appreciate the issue of the traffic too, and we all, you know, I hate it when I'm in traffic, so we're not going to deny it. And we do deal with impact. So one of the changes that happened also on 193, the specific plan originally before the Oak Tree Lane loop back, we had the signal on the west side collector and basically two lane only to the intersection of 193 and Sierra College. With the new PFE update with the changes, now that's four lane all the way. So that's part of the changes, and you're going to see some changes being built right now, part of those two, four lanes. You know, it's under construction. Hopefully PG&E done with Taylor Morrison, so we can get it done. So there are, you know, changes happening now and some will be implemented by the city through the PFE. One of the things that we also looked at this project, you know, it is gated community, which is great, and people like me live in gated community, I appreciate it. But also we looked at this as a connection point for the outside. And then that's a challenge sometimes because you have gated communities where you want to explore. And we promised people, we said it at the planning commission, that people that they've never been on this project, when we build it, they will be able to be visiting the project. They'll be able to see the rock formation and the open space. Because we're going to be allowing 12 bridges tie in to go all the way to McBean and downtown, go to the regional park if we work hard in getting it done. So that's an opportunity for the outside people to enjoy it. And guess what? They don't have to go through the gates. That's unique too, because typically in a gated community, you want to be gated. Here, we don't have the gate on the main connections. And also we work on with the school on the north side, and Houghe School comes in in the middle. So we were connected back, or we don't have that, so it's gone. But we have a connection in front of Oak Tree Lane that ties in from the trail on the northeast side to the west side. So that's going to be also eight-foot sidewalk, good for pedestrian. So the objective here is really to create a community that has a uniqueness in a sense like the parks. It's not just one park or two parks. We're looking at it as a gym along your trails. So that's also a unique opportunity we're able to create, but also live within the environment. So we're saving trees within the park, outcropping. So we were able to create all these kind of activities along the trail. So you can enjoy the parks, you can, now you have your favorite park. You come from Village 19, you maybe want to go to one on the right or one on the left. So that's going to be a unique opportunity, just just any trail. Another thing I want to mention that, you know, this project, I know this is boring, but Vin will appreciate it. We have an opportunity to solve the city problem. We have water lines that leak, some old problems. So we are building this 30-inch water line, part of the first phase, which we started that with Hidden Hills and Oak Tree Lane, and now we have to finish it all the way. And before even we start, we have to have a bypass line. And so all these things this project will solve too. I mean, the city right now have a water line. I was communicating with city staff to go meet a tank. They don't have access how to go back, and if there's any problem, you have this 20-inch water line that's 60, 70 years old that needs to be replaced. So there's infrastructure we're building, but also the goal is that when people are living there, they're proud of the community. And we are proud to bring in front of you. Hopefully, you allow us to move forward and start seeing it, you know, being built and really allow the community to start enjoying this project. It's not going to be part of Phase One, but it's going to take one step at a time. And hopefully, the economy will allow us to move forward and get it from west to east and get it done. And looking forward to bringing more for you, for more approval in the future, but we're excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Anybody else? Testimony on this item? Are you online?
Yes, thank you. I will go ahead and unmute George O'Connor. Please provide your public comment. Mr. O'Connor, do you wish to provide a public comment?
Anybody else? Oh, okay. If in the meantime, well, oh. Got his hand raised. We'll give him a second. No, okay. Yeah, okay. All right. Anybody else?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me now? Another window just popped up and blocked me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Right. My name is George O'Connor. I live in the Delaware community on the, on the south side of this project. And I've been trying to follow along on different things. One of the things that I find annoying, it's not a showstopper, but it's stretching imagination, there's a line called the backbone of the water system. And instead of having that run in parallel with the water supply, it branches off and runs along the boundary line for some reason, which is not clear. And I was wondering if there is any clarity as to what's happening with that. When I've asked about it, it says that there's several options that are still being considered. And it seems like the water system would be a, a, a primary element for the entire system. And to still be undecided on how we're doing the major piping for the water is somewhat surprising. But it kind of fits in with some of the comments earlier about maybe there's a new staff at the, at the water department that is struggling with getting this stuff done. There's another comment in the, in the documents that refers to the number of add-on, add-ons to the water system that then kicks in some responsibilities, some new, new things that have to be done. And that number, I believe, is 12,100, but doesn't say when that number of additions will be reached. And I was wondering if anybody knows when, when that would be.
Okay, I can have, I can have the applicant speak to that. Thank you for your question.
I'm not sure about the second question, but the first one, in the project, we have alternatives. So as you go in south to connect to the city tank, and we had added by staff another loop system that we didn't anticipate initially. So we showed alternatives because you don't know if there's issues along the way because that was something the staff added. And we, you know, we looked at it, but to make final decision, we have to meet with staff and go to the field. But based on what we have right now, the alternative one, which is running it together, seems like doable. Meeting with staff on Friday to visit the site and reconfirm it, to start the design actually in part of Phase One. Our goal is to start that water line this, this fall if we can. So it'll be same system, will be actually three lines, not two. So that's, so more than what he thought. But the second question, I wasn't clear about what the question was.
So the trenching, it'll be all, all the water going into one trench and not running along the south, the south boundary, east-west boundary?
It will be, I mean, it will not be one trench because we have separations. There's high pressure, low pressure, it'll be in same vicinity, working with staff. And their, you know, water department see what's appropriate. But yes, we'll be in the same area, with same easement basically.
So the other question was, on the city's water system, there's some sort of criteria that once so many people have been added to that water system, new things kick in. And it said that that's going to be after 12,100 additions have been made on, on, on the system. Does anybody have any idea where we sit with regards to how many taps there are on the existing water system? When will we reach the 12,100? Is it during your, your project or?
Three of us are looking at each other. So I would clarify that we are adopting the, the maps and that once this project is adopted and approved, that the applicant will bring forward specific plans. As, as Tony Frazier just said, once it's approved, they begin the design process. And that's where a lot of this is sorted out. You know, at the moment, you are approving the concept of this project. You are allowing the number of homes that will be built. That is, that is what we're doing tonight. We're not talking about where a lot of water lines will be designed, what the impact is to the system. That happens at a further stage in the process.
Go ahead, Vin.
Yes, let me add to that. And I think, I think the question really, it sounds to me like the gentleman is asking about a specific trigger as to how many drilling units might trigger additional water main improvements. The city, you know, maintains and tries to keep a water master plan updated. In fact, our engineering manager, Aracely Casares, is working on the water master plan update. And with each subsequent development that comes in, and Mr. Frazier is well aware of this, we actually require that the developer model the flow and the pressures, you know, with each of these developments. And that actually adds a lot of time to the approval process. And our assistant city manager is correct. We will get into the weeds from our engineering staff when it comes to working with the developer and their engineers to ensure that the new system is, you know, on par, if not better than what we have. A lot of the requirements with these additional lines are, are comments from SP, from our senior staff, that is requiring above and beyond of the, of the developers, engineers, to make our overall water system better, right? If we find what probably works, that's, there's some old lines that need, that's obsolete, that's getting old, that we want to upgrade, and it makes sense, it's reasonable, it's not precluded from, you know, it's not over too much of a burden on, on development. And perhaps it's reimbursable from our PFE program, which is, you know, created with, with our connection fees and our master planning. You know, we try to implement those changes to, to keep our water system up to date.
Vin, maybe you can just share a little bit that the other part that was not said that might address this gentleman's question is, a water modeling analysis is required on almost all projects of any real size to ensure pressure, adequate pressure. And when you have a system that's, you know, looped or, or connected to all the other systems, it's really, we've talked about this at council a bunch of times. The reason the water system is so expensive is that it's only really as valuable as its weakest point. So when you add things, it puts pressure on others. And so that's why when you see developments occurring, sometimes the work that's occurring is not just on the site itself. It may be down the road a ways because they have to upgrade line because they're impacting that line. So they're required to submit studies that go to our experts, and our experts look and make sure that the, the math is correct.
Also want to add, this is actually a good question to really understand the system. Sorry, I thought you were, sorry.
I told him he could come up, yeah.
This is like a village one, the village designed master plan communities. Our project is a part of that village. So, you know, water is especially critical one, you know, sewer, you, you know, project build and they get their sewer going somewhere, but water has to work all together. So for example, our project will make Turkey Creek Estate have a better water system. I know that, you know, their system right now is maxed out because the village gets designed altogether. They cannot come and bring your water lines through level project to tie in. So we're bringing three lines from the tank area to feed, and high-pressure system that's going to feed to the east at, you know, more pressure. So really, you have to look at these, as this project built, when you approve them, you're really completing the puzzle. If you stop in the middle of the village and halfway is done, then staff will not be able to serve the committee that already started. And that's really critical to understand. Thank you.
All right, any other? No? Okay, all right, we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to council. I'm, I'm going to pause just one second before we continue this conversation. Mr. Madill, would you please speak to our water team? Are we suffering from incapabilities in our team? Because I, I, I think I'm a little offended by the remarks tonight.
I'm not aware of any. I know we have a very diligent staff that monitors our system with SCADA 24/7. And we actually had a water master plan meeting just today, reviewing our water supply, Chapter Four. But we've been actively and continuously working on our water system, evaluating our, our water system and planning for the future. Later tonight, Chris Nelson, our, our manager in the water department, will be presenting a public hearing for water connection fees that actually go towards that investment in the future water supply. We've made a recent investment in the Ofor Water Treatment Plant with PCWA. We're working, we have several CIP projects, including Aquifer Storage and Recovery Well Plan. So we are thinking ahead. We are working with our engineers. We're constantly, as, as the city engineer Vin mentioned, looking at water models. And we have a staff that every day is working on making, making sure our system's functioning as designed.
Well, and do our senior staff train our new staff and when they retire?
Yeah, we, we have.
Are they leaving them defenseless with no information?
We have, we have few new staff. We have several very seasons-long tenured staff here at the city. But we, we have a mix and we did get authorization to hire a new staff member. And this budget, we will be bringing on someone new to train. And likely, what happens is usually it's a seasoned street maintenance worker that's very familiar with the water system because they've had many years of experience fixing water leaks. And they want to have a job monitoring SCADA and water sampling and something that's less strenuous. So usually those seasoned So usually, those seasoned maintenance workers transition to the water department.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You know, Mayor, so I kind of understand how you feel. Because we have a pretty, very good water team. But there's two other things that Matt didn't mention. The first is, is that in order to touch our system, I can't go out and fix a water leak, can't do it, it's illegal. You have to have a certification and it's varying grades. Chris, are five now or four? Five grades. And all of our staff that are involved in the water system have to get these certifications, which are, we don't administer those certifications. They have to go take tests and study for a long time to get there, and have to have quite a bit of experience to even qualify to take the test in the first place in many cases. So that's part one. Part two is, I think it's fair enough to say that like when you have employees, we have a gentleman in Public Works a couple of years ago who retired after 35 years with us. He is going to take with him institutional knowledge that we cannot download out of his brain. We try our best to download as much as possible, but over 35 years, I can't remember what I did last week alone 20 years ago, right? So overall, though, they have, most of the employees that work in the water department have, as Matt said, have worked in other departments or in the water department for a really, really long time and have, and know the system inside and out.
Just since we're talking about this, Tim, a good friend of mine that's been in the water world for 40 years commented to me that he's very impressed with our water staff and certifications that they hold and the different certifications that they're seeking. He was very impressed with that, so I got to lean on that.
Appreciate the input. All right, back to the topic at hand. All right, thank you for the latitude in my little bird walk here. Thank you, Michaela. Okay, any other comments or questions from the council?
So I understand that, you know, this project was part of the overall 5300 homes or whatever it is. And we're always worried about the impact with traffic and things like that. With development from, as it continues to move on, what's this, 20 years that it's going to take to build 1,000 homes or so?
But it's been 20 years.
Well, it's been 20 years, but I also saw that there was a deadline of 20 years for the completion or something like that.
The DA is effective for 20 years.
Okay.
Yeah, the absorption just depends on how quick the economy is sort of moving. I can, I just shared, just this morning, I found out that we only had about 17 new home sales, I think it was for the month of June in Lincoln. So it doesn't count resales, just new homes, which is very, very, very low for us. Usually, we were running at 60, 70, 80 a month typically, depending on the projects. So you figure, I think on Village Seven, when council approved that recently, the estimate by Lewis Companies was a 15 to 20, 10 to 20-year kind of term. That project, of course, is two and a half times the size of this one. But you figure, you know, a good 10 years, depending on phasing.
I was just worried that it was going to be so fast that we would see the impact very quickly. It sounds like it's going to be spread out. And so although the impact is going to be there, and it was always put into the planning that it would be, maybe the impact will be minimal over time as time goes.
Can I add on to that?
You can.
Okay, yeah.
So that was my biggest concern. I think I'd like to start out on a positive note first, so I'll just backtrack for a second on my thoughts. We're looking at this project. I really love the recreation that was put into this. I like that there is the connectivity with the trails, there's more than the minimum amount of open space that was integrated into this. The parks are going to be great because those are, I was told, going to be integrated into the development, during the development. I wanted to make sure that that wasn't something that was going to be an afterthought and built at the end or after, you know, so many homes. I think it's going to be, the first one is going to be slowly after the first phase and so forth. So I love that. And the, I don't know, how many miles do we know of connectivity and trails this will add?
Almost three and a half.
Yeah, so this is great. I think I can appreciate this as my children like to bike, we like to bike, that we'll be able to go all the way from 12 Bridges to effectively McBean, which is really super cool that, I know a lot of people are going to be excited about that. So those are, I think, the big positives. And, but my biggest concern, even though it was only one big concern, it's a big concern, was the traffic impact potentially on Sierra College. And 12 Bridges has been something that we keep talking about. And my concern that I was talking with our city manager earlier this morning about is that all of a sudden, are we going to have 1,000 new cars going through and I'm never going to be able to make a left-hand turn? Or are we going to see influx and accidents while we're waiting for a light that we effectively can't expedite if we wanted to because it's not ours? And so not having control over the mitigation is concerning to me. But if it truly is going to be done in the next couple of years from the county, and this is going to be a slow evolution and process, which is what we were discussing earlier, it makes me feel more comfortable about approving this influx that was already approved and the overall development in the village in mind, that it's not going to be overnight, 1,000 cars driving down Sierra College, because that would be an absolute nightmare. So those are my thoughts.
So I'm going to reiterate what Councilmember Eklund said about, really appreciate the work that the staff has put in on this and the applicant, specifically Mr. Frazier. I always appreciate his work and his due diligence and all of the parks and trails and connectivity and all that and the water infrastructure. I really appreciate that. But I have to be really honest here, and I've wrestled with this for a couple of days now, because that's all I've had really to think about this, is a couple of days. And I'm going to share why I'm really concerned and frustrated with this. Over a year ago, I can't even remember the date, and I think it was the gentleman in the back, and correct me if I'm wrong, sat down with me and the developer, Mr. Frazier was not at that meeting, rolled out his map and said, yeah, we're going to put 900 homes right here, and now it's 1,050, not 900. And I specifically said, I am not comfortable with 900 homes right there right now because not only traffic, not only the fact that we continue to have accidents at 12 Bridges and Sierra College, not only the fact that we're still waiting for the Oak Tree Lane Light, the fact that we are on the precipice of a multimillion-dollar expansion program for our wastewater treatment plant. We're not quite at capacity yet, but we're getting there. And that's a problem that we are facing that is going to be very expensive for the, for this while the JPA, but it's an impact for us and our ratepayers. And I said, I'm not okay with that, I have real concerns with that. And the conversation went, oh, well, thank you, I appreciate your input and, because we're doing our due diligence and really appreciate your input. And that was the last conversation I had with the developer. And I don't know the meetings that happen with the other council members because they meet separately. I, and the thing is, is that, and I don't, I'm not saying this to be rude, I'm not, but other people that we work with meet with me all along the way. And I know exactly what's happening, and I can express my concerns, and we can talk about things that are issues. And again, I'm just one person, and being the mayor does not give me any more authority than the rest of the council. And I wasn't the mayor at the time I had this meeting, so that's not the issue. It's the fact that I'm still one of five, and I am the senior member of this council, and I have not had one conversation with this developer since that first meeting when I said, I'm not okay with this. Again, I'm only one of five, and my voice is only my vote, but I am concerned about 1,000 homes. And I get, Village One is expansive and it's been planned for 20 years. But you know, the thing is, is that I keep saying that, well, this project over here and this project over here, it's been waiting all these years. I get that. But we, a lot of things have changed since 2012. And I would have really appreciated the opportunity to walk through this process with the developer, the owner of this property. And again, I have great respect for, this is not a reflection on Mr. Frazier and his work, and this is not a reflection on the hopes and dreams of the Level family. I understand it's their property, they have the right to do what they want to it. But I also know that this city and this council are facing a lot of situations. We're working through tax revenue issues, we're working through traffic. And to your point, ma'am, we have one traffic officer, we have vehicles for more, but we have to, we are finding ways to increase our general funds so we can have more and to, and to just, you know, be okay with, I mean, and it's not the only project, so I'm not trying to single this one out. But this particular one, I had a very specific conversation, and I had a very specific concern, and it was ignored. So I have wrestled with this for the last couple of days since I saw this. I'm sitting in Sean's office, and I'm like, wait, is this the same project? And he goes, yes. And I was like, okay. So I'm a little annoyed about it. And, you know, we've talked it through, and I've only spoken to one other council member about this and shared my concerns. So although I appreciate all the other things, I'm having a real struggle with this. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I think it would have been great to be able to have conversations about, you know, could we scale it down, or could we do it in different phases or whatever? And so that's where I stand, and I don't, I don't think I can actually vote yes on this tonight.
Holly? A question for you.
Yep.
If you could change it, how would you implement it? And over what period of time? Had you been given the opportunity to express that?
Well, I don't know, I mean, less units, right?
Units or just more time?
Well, I don't know about the time. I mean, that's, I mean, all projects like this, like you just said a minute ago, take time to build out. It's the process, it's the process and the number of units right now, both. It's those two things together.
Would it change if they were to break it down into, you know, 300 homes at a time over the next 30 years?
I don't know, maybe, but I, but it would have been nice to have that conversation.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I wanted to know what your feelings were on that and how you thought.
My feelings is that I'm just not okay with, in that area, with the traffic problems that we're having, with the light issues that we're having, to say right now, I'm okay with 1,050 homes in this section. Because we've approved a couple of other ones in Village One recently, and they're smaller areas, you know, they're larger lots, it's kind of spread out more. And so, I don't know, I think I'm, I think that it would have just been helpful for me to be more comfortable if I'd have been, if there was some coming back to me. You know, I had a conversation, I've had a very specific conversation, and it feels like, well, we're just going to steamroll anyway and not come back and talk to every council member. That's just how I feel about it, so. And you all are free to disagree with me if you want to, and that's fine. I'm just, I'm just not happy with this particular project right now at this moment. It doesn't mean that if there's some changes that I might get there, and again, I want to make it very clear, this is not a reflection on Mr. Frazier. I appreciate all his work in Lincoln, and he does a great job, and he's also, you know, very communicative most of the time. This is, I put this on the other, the developers, so anyway.
Hey, Sean. Some of the concerns that she's raised about facing a lot of different issues, you know, KPA and thing that we have going on there. How critical are these issues based on this project? And is the impact of this project going to be to the scale that Holly has got a concern for?
Well, it depends on which portion. What Adrian, our senior consultant, mentioned is that on almost every single project the city council approves in Lincoln, you adopt this finding called a statement of overriding considerations. And in plain English, what that means is, yeah, we know that this is going to create impacts, but the public good of the overall impact is worth those drawbacks. And almost every single project, meaning every home that all of us live in, wherever you may live, had some similar kind of finding very likely, unless it was just a, you know, a small little infill project or something. And so we never say that there will be no impact, there absolutely will be an impact, there's no question about it. Will it, will this project, if you're just asking my professional opinion, in and of itself affect in a significant way the intersection at 12 Bridges and Sierra College Boulevard in the time period that we think that project, the improvement of that signal there is likely to occur? I think it's unlikely, just given the amount of development that's occurring in and around that area. We know what the building patterns look like in Bickford, we know what they look like in Turkey Creek and Esplanade. And so for all of those reasons, like that, if I were evaluating my major concerns, it wouldn't be like top level, not to say that it couldn't be for someone else. As it relates to sewer capacity, the way that the sewer capacity is designed and the expansion is designed is that it's intended, we do not do expansion projects to our infrastructure on the backs of ratepayers. Ratepayers pay for replacement and rehab, not new. The reason why you hear the Building Industry Association here every single time we touch fees with concerns is that we try to collect exactly the right amount of resources from every home that's built to make sure that those, those new homes are paying their way. And similarly structured such in the sewer world where at a certain point, there will be enough development that's occurred that's paid that sewer critical treatment fee that we have, that goes into, is already going into a kitty that will eventually pay for the expansion of the plant. That's how it's designed. But one engineer one time, many years ago, told me something that I've found to just be so true about both water, sewer, and any other infrastructure, is to the extent that resources go away and/or there is not enough sewer capacity, or there is not enough water capacity, that's sort of the end of the conversation regardless of your decision tonight. No one's moving into a home that doesn't have water, no one's moving into a home that doesn't have sewer. So I tend not to worry about that kind of thing as much because to the extent that, you know, good examples, when Sun City Lincoln Hills was built, the developer for that project built our current wastewater tertiary plant with their own resources because the city didn't have enough money to do that at the time. And similar thing kind of exists here, like we were talking about with water. If it gets to a point where we simply cannot serve, the project doesn't happen. So separately, as it relates to phasing, I think some of the, one of the things that wasn't really mentioned by Mr. Frazier, or we have a gentleman from JMC here tonight, is what is the reality of this project? Is the reality that it's something that we see take shape and build up in the next couple of years? Or, you know, I think every developer has probably told us that at some point, but our experience has almost always been that they take, that the market doesn't move that quickly, and five, six, eight, 10 years later, it's still moving along. So maybe that's, that might be useful information. But I don't think it's like a, I think what the mayor is indicating is, I don't think it's as simple as a binary decision. I think it's that the council's job is to take special note and, you know, one of the things that I think that councils in the past in Lincoln have been criticized of is rubber stamping and not having these kind of robust conversations about like, hey, does this really make sense, and what are we concerned about? And regardless of whether or not it was cooked years and years ago, you still have the right to and should have a robust conversation about whether or not what is being proposed in front of you meets your standard or not. So I don't know if that's useful to you, Councilor of Rapid.
In connection with that, I feel like you have to be very strategic so that you don't outgrow services and you have to grow not only the right rate, but at the, so that everything balances out, right? And so I guess the question that I would pose to you or staff in connection with Holly's concerns is, is there any staff or anyone that has any reservation as to how fast this project will, could go in that may affect that balance?
Not, I have not been notified by the folks that are my technicians that would evaluate this, that have any significant concerns, that we just have an absolute failure in Phases One or Two, no. But I will say, that's a different discussion than pace and speed of development.
What was the TRA in this village?
I can't remember, there's like a couple of them in Village One, and I don't remember which one it is off the top of my head.
I should have looked before, but forgot there.
It's in the same, it's in the same deal. It's, it's in the same, it's in the same deal as Esplanade and Turkey Creek at a 45-55 share is my memory.
Was it?
Yes.
Okay. Good, okay. Well, go ahead.
Yeah, no, so first, I, I can't speak to the follow-through although if the same thing happened to me and I didn't get the follow-through, I think I'd go the same way the mayor does. So it's just kind of a mental note to, to do that if you say you're going to, I think it's important. I, I'm not as concerned about the traffic primarily because this thing is broken up into three phases. There's already pressed the gas on the traffic light that we care about even before this. And I suspect that traffic light will be in before any substantial number of homes are even here. And we of course can control the rate of permitting later, should that be an issue. So I feel like we have a way of mitigating timing that part. The, the one thing I'd say that I mentioned before in previous conversations about looking at our specific plan and about the density and design of this is that that was a little bit baked when the specific plan was adopted in terms of the size of the lots and the various areas. And I think that just your concerns highlight that we, when those specific plans come through, that we need to have a more robust conversation on what kind of density we want to have in those areas. Is pay more attention to those color plots on those specific plans when they come through, I think, would be worthwhile because I, I share what you're saying about that. In terms of a low-density layout, and I've been pretty critical of some of the specific plans and layouts that have come through the city in the number of years, this one is pretty good. The trail integration with the parks, it goes all the way around, it's available to everyone in Village One. They went and added trail up the west side along with a walking bridge over the water area there. I think it's gonna be a hallmark feature of the, of the development. So I, I appreciate that, given the context of working in a low development or low-density designation, that they did a pretty good job of integrating the open space and the trails within, which, which I compliment them for doing and I appreciate. I would have, would have probably liked to seen a different specific plan for a number of reasons back in November of '22, but I'm not in November of '22 and I'm in July of '25. And I think given the decisions we previously made, this is a pretty good, a pretty good layout and it meets a lot of our continuing objectives about seeing better development for the long term in our community.
Thanks for that. Oh, I just thought of something. This is a different project, but it would be adjacent, I believe, if my memory from Planning Commission is correct, is that the waterfront project, isn't that going to be kind of catty-cornered to the north east side of this property?
No, so they are not adjacent. I'll bring up the approved projects map.
Wonder if that would be.
So that's the.
Commercial bikeable.
So yeah, eventually.
It's on the other side.
Yes.
Yeah, it's backwards. Well, it looks like the trail would actually connect to that, so that's cool.
So you'll get to Oak Tree Lane and then you'll have connections and adjacent to the waterfront is the regional park and obviously there will be, you know, systems in there as well. So there will be paths in order to get to the waterfront, yes.
Well, that's cool because that's gonna be, it was a while ago when we were talking about that project, but I was excited about that. I know a lot of people were excited about the commercial and that giving all of these people that live in this area the rec and the commercial and the restaurants and all the things and be able to bike there is really cool. And not just bike there, but you've got Sun City so they can take their EVs and golf carts to, to that area and they don't have to go through the city. So, yeah. But I completely empathize with whatever everybody's saying and it's, it's complex. There's, you know, we're weighing a lot and I, our city manager put it perfectly. We're all tasked to make sure we're making the right decision for everybody and residents and not rubber stamping anything, get away all of this and I don't think any one of us wants to be a rubber stamper.
Okay, well with that, oh, Mr. Frazier, did you, you're standing up, do you?
Sure. Point to bring up is that the project is three phases. So actually JMC will not be owning the whole project upfront. So it's about five-year takedown, so just to buy the property is about five years. So the family has, you know, so they'll be closing on phase one to move forward and they have to close on phase two, phase three, that's about five years. And then you have to build them. So it is 10 years plus, plus, plus. I mean, we all wish good economy, but another thing to bring up just quickly is that you have $70 million worth of impact fees that's being paid outside of the cost within Village One to build things and assist with a critical facility like sewage plant and water. So this project even paying for things about maybe $15,000 for the connector all the way to 190, between 65 and 199. So these impacts are being done and using the impact fees that we pay. Our project pays into Village Five interchanges that's being planned. So, so it's not, we're just building in Village One. Our money goes and spent somewhere else in the city. Actually, Village One has the least impact on the city in term of fees. And we discussed that with City One, they merged Village One and Village Five, we had complaints about it because a lot of the money go into Village Five area. But we understand that's part of the city and it is what it is. So that's what you have to think about it. Again, the puzzle is not just Village One, it's the entire city.
Appreciate that.
Oh, I just had one more thing and I don't think I forgot anything else after that. We were discussing, we were discussing lighting and I think that JMC was, was interested and, and remembered a conversation that we had back and I looked for a solid hour through the agenda minutes trying to find, I remember this teenager coming and talking about the lighting that doesn't affect habitats and nocturnal habits of, you know, all the little critters around. And then also trying to make sure that they're being mindful of Sun City adjacent, that all of a sudden there isn't this giant spotlight coming out of that area and that there are some ordinances that we have and minimum requirements on how many streetlights we require. And I didn't know if that's something that we could think about or look into later to maybe make that easier for, what are they, are they called night sky communities? I know Verdara is and there's a couple other ones in Roseville and.
Yeah, it's actually an interesting thing that internally in the planning department, there's been, it's been a subject to debate on more broadly. If you have a gated community that's gonna have private roads, they're gonna maintain their own stuff. We have been asking ourselves the question internally about what standardized improvements in a subdivision do we make developers do in a private development versus something that's not, non-private? It's been a variant, there's a lot of differing opinions about it. I, I personally kind of landed on the side of if you're gonna gate a community and it's gonna be their responsibility and they prefer to have less lighting, okay. You know, their call. That's to me much more of a design kind of quality of life. Some people really hate that and other people really like it. So I, I don't know that we have a perspective one way or the other on it at this point.
Okay. Okay, that it? Okay, so in just a second, I'll be ready to take a motion and we can vote on this. And I'll just say that I appreciate the conversation, I appreciate the information. I'm sorry, are you, are you with the project? Well, I already closed the public hearing and I gave several opportunities for, to speak. Am I allowed to let her do that? Okay. All right, go ahead, come on ma'am, thank you. I'd like to hear your comment.
Talking about 1,000 cars, if there's 1,000 homes, there's probably gonna be 2,000 cars. And I was at the last meeting and there was talk about traffic. And the traffic's gonna be on 65 and Sierra College Boulevard, not just a light at 193. And when they talked about that, they said there is no plans for improvement at 65 or Sierra College Boulevard. So if there's no, no traffic improvements, how are we gonna handle 2,000 more cars? I don't get it. And then I heard tonight that the actual water decisions are made after approval of the project? Did I hear that correctly?
What we said is that what's being considered tonight is the general concept of the plan. And once that gets done, then they will bring forth their specific plans that draws out where the water goes and all of that. And then that gets hammered out as we go through.
Right, well, that doesn't make sense to me either.
Well, that's the way, that's the general way construction works. And it all gets run through our building department and our engineering and all that. And all the plans are scrutinized and made sure that they're done right before they, yes. So that's the way general, that's the way construction works. Yeah, it's not that we're just throwing it to the wind and saying they can do whatever they want to. This is a general concept agreement and then we go into the weeds of the plans and how things get laid out, water pipes, et cetera.
Oh, I hope they can get it to work because if these people in 12 Bridges have a trickle of water, it may be a problem.
You know, I, I understand your comment with that and I'm gonna close public comment, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Thank you.
No, no, thank you. I, let me just respond to that really quickly. That, you know, Sean Skelly, you know, met with former mayor Nader, listened to his issues. We got the people out there, it took a little bit longer than he probably wanted to. But, you know, sometimes those issues arise, it doesn't mean that our water system doesn't work. And to be quite honest, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the former mayor, but to be quite honest, this is the same water system that was in place when he was on the council. And a lot of these developments that we're talking about right now, he was on the council and he approved them. So for people to stand up here and criticize when he was one of the decision makers, like I completely sympathize with water pressure problems, it sounds like our team is handling it. And so that your question is, it has, it's, we're talking about apples and oranges here. And so they'll take care of the water planning and the, all of the infrastructure once we get to the next step. Mr. Chapman, I, I just closed it again. I did, I asked multiple times, anybody have a public comment on this? Okay, I'll reopen it again for you. Nope, please come forward, I'm happy to reopen it for you again. But I, I gave multiple opportunities and then I closed public hearing and then I opened it again. But please, thank you.
Well, I appreciate it and.
Yes.
I'm sorry that I missed it.
It's okay, it's okay.
This, this is something I bring up every single time when we review, you know, whether something's coming online, whether it's five years, 10 years, 20 years. The one thing that constantly happens, it's a good news and it's a bad news. The good news is every time I talk to people about living in Lincoln, they go, what's some of the great features of it? And people will go, do they have as many parks as they say they do? And, and we do and that's a draw and that's a good thing. The only comment I want to make is that, there's a phrase out there that says, if you keep trying to use the same method in order to come out with a different decision, that's insanity. My point to this is, how many parks can we continue to put online in the city? The developer gives you the property, they build it. Why aren't we looking at also adding to that bill? What it costs the city to operate that park for the next five years or 10 years? At least have an end to it. But if we don't, the, the scale of what it costs us is just continuing to rise. And every time this happens, we're gonna be facing it all over again. And at some point, we have to not kick that can down the road and say, can we afford it? And if we can't, then the developer needs to at least take that up for at least a period of time that doesn't draw down from the city's expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we're allowed to do that, but I'm gonna let Mr. Skelly, and I'm closing public hearing.
Uh, so fair point, I think Mr. Chapman's made that point before. If you live in a house in Lincoln that was built after 2018, you pay a partial tax for lack of a better term, that no one else in Lincoln pays. And that tax goes towards the maintenance and upkeep and improvement of park facilities in localized and regional areas. And so he is correct that you continue to bring on public infrastructure and it's expensive to maintain and everything costs a lot to mow and weed eat and, you know, et cetera. And so that was the reason at that time that the council established that community facilities district to offset any of those costs, which, you know, of course is a bit of a burden on the, the new folks moving in, but that's the only way to do it such that it doesn't affect current payers.
Let me just add to that if you don't mind. These parks will be maintained by the HOA, so the city will not be responsible for maintaining them.
Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the council, what I was about to say is I'm still gonna vote no. And, but I do appreciate the conversation, I appreciate the information of the phasing and all of that. So, and it looks like the rest of the council, I don't, can't read your mind, but it'll probably get approved, that's fine. But my no vote is, is my concerns are still legitimate. And also maybe a message to those who are bringing forth projects to not just sidestep a council member or two when they initially voice concerns. And that's what I feel like happened here and there was no follow-up and I don't appreciate it. And I do have legitimate concerns that could have been addressed, but then I had to do it here in public. So you can shake your head all you want to, but that's the reality of it. I'm willing to take a, a motion.
Do you, do you want it all as one or do you need it separate?
Yeah, do, do we need to all want it separate? Okay.
Okay, so I'll move adopt a resolution recommending city council adopt proposed addendum to this certified 202012 Village One Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report, state clearinghouse number, certifying that the proposed Level Ranch project will not result in any new significant information or substantial importance, this is a run-on sentence. New impacts, new mitigation measures, newer revised alternatives or an increase in the severity or the, of previously identified significant impacts that would require major revisions to the EIR and therefore pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act SEQA Guidelines, Section 15162, the preparation of an additional supplement or subsequent EIR is not required. I'm never volunteering to do that again.
Just take a breath.
Gee, my knees.
One second.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor Andriata. No, thank you.
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the large lot tentative subdivision map for the proposed Level Ranch project.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata. No.
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving a small lot tentative subdivision map for the proposed Level Ranch project.
Second.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata. No.
I'll move waiving the first reading and by adopting by title only the ordinance establishing a development agreement between the City of Lincoln and Carroll S. Level Living Trust and the Frenchmore Family Living Trust for the development of approximately 241 acres within the Village One specific plan area.
Second.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata. No. All right, was that the rest of it? That it?
I think so.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, on to item 12B. Conduct a public hearing and consider waiving the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance amending sections of the Lincoln Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services Regarding Water Connection Charges and further finding the ordinance is exempt from the environmental review under SEQA. Chris, welcome.
Mayor, I'd like to give a brief introduction for Chris. He is our water manager and I just wanted to reference that he has a Distribution Operator 3 certification. He's Backflow certified, he has a Cross-Connection Control certification. He has a Water Efficiency 2 certification and he's a Certified Irrigation Auditor as well as he has a bachelor's degree in business administration.
You mentioned that he was the chair of the.
Oh, he's also represents the Sacramento area regionally and he's in a, he's a member, he's an executive committee member for the Regional Water Authority.
And how many hours do you think that you spend typically thinking or working on water every week? I get some very long emails from him.
It goes into my sleep, I woke up from a nightmare the other day, so. Yeah, no, water is life and I'd actually really appreciate the, appreciate the comment, appreciate the, you know, the discussion around water tonight. Regardless, it's always good to, to talk about the water, the water system that we have and how proud I am of it and the operators that oversee. and how proud I am of it, and the operators that oversee it. Seasoned, um, certified, uh, professional operators, both on water quality and, and the distribution side, so. Um, but, I am here to talk to you today about something that sounds very familiar. I was here earlier this month, and we talked about water connection fees. And we're bringing this item back. Um, it's specifically about the water connection fees for the regulated, unregulated water. Um, and what we had asked, uh, was that we, uh, staff, you know, we recommend that council conduct a public hearing and waive the first reading, I'm sorry, the full reading, and introduce by title only an ordinance amending section 1304160 of the Lincoln Municipal Code establishing water connection charges. Again, very familiar from, uh, meeting earlier this, uh, this month. Uh, basically, what we are asking for in the, uh, change to the municipal code, code is allowing the city manager to automatically make these adjustments uh, based on the Nexus study and on the PCWA, um, rates that are set in December each year. Um, and that, of course, is a pass-through. So, again, this was heard, uh, previously, and, uh, or was adopted, uh, for the first reading. Um, the only thing that has changed is the dating, uh, for the unregulated water fee. Uh, the effective date was previously set at January, and it act, I'm sorry, previously set at July, and it needs to be set for January or as close as possible thereafter to coincide with the PCWA rate adjustment. And that's pretty much all there is to this one here.
Questions or comments? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this. Any public testimony on this item? Be online? Okay, close public hearing, oh, go ahead, yep.
Uh, okay, so, just to make sure. So, in section five amendment, the annual adjustments shall be effective each July 1st.
Yes, July 1st for the regulated. And the reason, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, finish.
Uh, the reasoning for that is, uh, according to the Nexus study, we are going, um, off of an average, uh, annual average, beginning in April and ending in April of the, uh, I'm losing it here, uh, the construction cost index. So it times outright with it ending in April. We don't wanna go all the way to January on that, uh, so, I'm sorry, yeah, July.
So it's just the, uh, unregulated one that need to be January.
Unregulated one is the one that needs to be January to coincide with PCWA, yes.
And when it was brought to you the first, when it was brought to you the first time, the dates were switched.
They were flipped, yeah.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Okay, there's another questions or comments?
I'll move adoption of 12B.
One second. Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Okay, item 12C, conduct a public hearing, waive first reading and adopt by title only an ordinance regulating the operation of food trucks. Ms. Malinkoff.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, the item you've all been waiting for this evening, I'm sure. Um, so, this evening, what is before you is an ordinance, um, to regulate the operation of food trucks within the City of Lincoln, and also finding that the ordinance is exempt from environmental review under SEQA. So the impetus for bringing this motion forward is there, obviously, in the, the past 10-plus years, we've all seen a boom in the popularity of food trucks, the diversity of products that it brings to the community, um, and a lot of excitement about certain trucks and social media, and people following them online, and going around to different places in town, and getting to visit and get their favorite food items. Um, however, about a year ago, the City of Lincoln Code Enforcement Department, as well as the Police Department, and also probably some in community development, started receiving complaints, um, about the, what's, I'm gonna call basically semi-permanent installation of these food trucks on private commercial properties. The concerns ranged from health and sanitation, because oftentimes, if you do a casual drive-by, you'll notice that there's an absent, absence of toilet or hand-washing facilities. Um, there is concern over competition for our brick and mortar facilities in the City of Lincoln that are paying high rent, they're paying premises liability insurance, um, and all of the costs and expense that goes along with, um, property taxes and triple net rent and all of that. Um, and then also, the impact that these, uh, food trucks have on parking in commercial parking lots, and also traffic issues, and impeding or blocking the free flow of traffic. The ordinance that is before you tonight, uh, was presented to the Downtown Lincoln Association, their general meeting on June 12th. It was also disseminated to the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and then it was also sent to several individual business owners, proprietors in town that had reached out to me and expressed some concern and interest um, in what we were going to be proposing going forward. Um, candidly, I didn't receive a lot of comments back. Um, most were in favor of the proposed ordinance. The only, um, change that was recommended had to do with the timing of the number of hours that, uh, the proposed ordinance allows for the operation of food trucks, and I'll cover that when I get to it. So I just wanted to highlight for you the key provisions of the ordinance. Uh, it distinguishes private property from public property. And so, when we talk about public property, we're talking about streets, alleyways, um, public parking lots, properties that are owned by the City of Lincoln. And generally speaking, this ordinance prohibits, uh, food trucks from just operating freely and taking up public amenities. Um, the permit that is contemplated by this ordinance can be issued at the city's discre- discretion. Um, and so, it can also be, um, issued one time for residential zones. So, the permits that would allow for food trucks on public property would be within commercial zones and also business professional, not in residential. It could be offered one time in the residential zones per year. It's important to understand that this is very much distinguished from the, uh, block-party type permits or private-party, um, large engagement permits, uh, where people maybe rent out all of McBean Park. Those are processed through the Park and Rec Department, through a completely different process. So this is not addressing this. That, this is simply addressing the food truck that pulls up on McBean Drive and just decides to stop and start doing business along the roadside. Um, and then additionally, the ordinance provides for much more specific or additional provisions if the city were to, in fact, issue, uh, a license or a permit for allowing for this type of vending on public property. Most importantly, it would require insurance and provision of a $2 million policy, also naming the city as an additional insured. And then also, um, signing a document that would provide for the defense and indemnity of the city if someone were to be injured while utilizing those services on public property. So the focus of the ordinance really is these established food trucks that are showing up in our private commercial properties. And so, the way this ordinance is structured, uh, code enforcement, and my officer Kimberly McHugh is here. She and, and Kristy McKenney had a very large hand in helping to craft this ordinance. And Kimberly was brave or silly enough to step up and volunteer code enforcement to take the lead in administering this program, processing the permits. The reality is, is that most of the complaints for these types of things are going to come through code enforcement anyway. So, um, she will be taking the lead on the implementation of this program if this ordinance is adopted tonight. And so, rather than have all of the food trucks have to apply individually for food truck permits with the city, which, as you can imagine, would potentially be a significant number of permits, the way we're seeing it roll out is that, the way the ordinance is drafted is it's actually the private property owner who would have to come and apply for a permit and ensure that their food truck vendors are complying with the regulations of the ordinance. And so, it makes the private property owner a responsible party under the conditions in terms of our Lincoln Municipal Code. So it'll, it'll streamline the process for code enforcement and require the less, lesser processing of permits. Um, food truck vendors will have to, however, have a business license in the City of Lincoln. They will also have to have a valid health certificate that's issued by the county. That comes with it, all of the required certifications for their employees with the, um, he- healthy food handling, safety, all those types of requirements that they have to meet. They have to provide for adequate sanitation, uh, while their food truck is in operation. That means not less than 200 feet away, there needs to be a restroom or hand, hand washing facility. That's not only for the consumer public, but that's for their employees who are going to be utilizing and making the food that our residents are eating. Currently, the ordinance, it has, provides for limited hours of operation of food truck vendors on this private property. It allows for six hours of operation in a 72-hour period. This is the one item that we did receive some comment back from. It was originally drafted at four hours, within a 12-hour, within a 72-hour period, but it was thought that four hours really probably wasn't enough time. Six hours would allow them to cover potentially a lunch and dinner shift, or a later night dinner shift. Um, all of the operations are limited between the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. So, that's really one area where, in speaking with some of the council members, if there was a thought that perhaps, um, six hours every 24 or 48 hours um, might be a little more reasonable, that is certainly an area that we can take a look at and make some amendments on the fly here this evening. Uh, the ordinance is drafted, uh, these food vendors cannot leave their trucks or items undetended when they're not in operation. So what you see going on today, where food trucks are basically permanently installed in these parking lots, and I've even seen it go so far as the food trucks no longer are taking their trucks off-site to go fill their propane tanks. They're actually having propane tanks show up on-site to refill their tanks, which obviously causes problems with, um, traffic compaction within the, in the parking lots, and also taking up more parking. Um, they cannot take up parking space that serves the brick and mortar businesses in these establishments. They cannot restrict ingress and egress. Uh, their vehicles must be properly licensed and registered, so no expired tags on their vehicles. And they also can't dump their gray water or water tanks, um, utilizing public services, manhole covers, the sewer system, that type of thing. Um, the ordinance also provides for some flexibility, allowing the city manager or his designee to adopt supplemental rules, regulations, and forms in order to implement the intention of the ordinance. So we understand this is kind of a work in process, it's our first time undertaking this type of a regulation. So we're gonna need to work some things out, create the forms, um, and do all of that. So that provides us with the flexibility to not have to come back to council for minor interpretations of this ordinance. The permit fee, uh, there will be a fee that we need to charge in order to process these permits. Will be coming to you separately as part of the master fee schedule at some date in the future, hopefully soon. The plan is to roll out this ordinance over the course of several weeks and provide for significant education to our commercial property owners to let them know of this change, once the ordinance comes into effect, and give them time, if they do have monthly rental agreements with their established vendors, to work that out, bring that to conclusion, and we will do our best to make sure that, um, there is due process given, and that none of, uh, the property rights of individuals are unduly harmed by the implementation of this ordinance. Because as a reminder, co- code enforcement's ultimate goal is always compliance. Um, it is not our desire in any way to be punitive, uh, when we can avoid it. Um, this ordinance does, however, establish penalties for violation, which include a financial penalty that's consistent with all of their Lincoln Municipal Code violations, and actually incorporates that section by reference. But it also provides for the suspension or revocation of a food truck permit. Um, and in the very extreme situation, uh, that we come across a severely dangerous or hazardous condition, it does allow for confiscation. But with any of the temporary or permanent suspension or revocation or confiscation, it provides for the opportunity to appeal in a very short timeframe within which to have that matter heard by an appeals officer. So I am open to questions, um, but the point of this hearing is to ask council to open a public hearing and waive first reading and adopt by title only the new chapter 5.25 of the Lincoln Municipal Code regulating food truck or operations and finding it is exempt from SEQA.
Great, thank you very much. Really appreciate all your work on this. I know it's something that we, you know, all of us have brought forward months ago. You've been really working through it, and I appreciate the due diligence. Um, any comments or questions from the council before I open? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any public testimony on this item? Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. Earlier, when I was talking about the ADA coordinator, that was what had gotten me into, this packet is what gotten me into looking at the ADA coordinator position and, uh, a committee advisory for the ADA. Had I been able to contact with someone, I wouldn't be up here talking to you and taking up your time and my time here right now. I went through this packet three different times, at three different times, and not once did I see anything. Here's the vision I want you to picture in your head. Here's the truck. Here's the food. When you reach for it, you usually reach like this. Now imagine yourself standing next to that truck and sitting in a chair, regular chair, and reach your food. My point is, it's not accessible to the disabled. Totally, totally missed in this 11-page report. I wonder why that is. Thank you.
Um, I can say that, maybe it should be somewhere in paper, but I can guarantee you that any food truck would go around and serve the person who couldn't reach up to the top. But with all the what you guys are trying to do to the food trucks, you might as well just say, we don't want food trucks in Lincoln. Because they're here to make some money, and the people that are allowing them to leave their truck there are to make a little bit money because maybe their business isn't doing well. Now, a lot of the restaurants close very early, and there's a lot of people that work 12, 16 hours, and they stop by because they don't wanna go home and have to cook, when it's so easy just to order a burrito or some tacos or whatever. Um, if, if it's the restaurants complaining that they're taking their business, I don't believe so. Because, again, they close early, and a lot of people don't like, you know, having to go to Roseville to go get something, or having to have a hamburger again because they want a taco or a burrito, or whatever else they're selling out there. Now, if it's about cleaning this and whatever, I can guarantee you that, when it comes to me, I'm very particular in that, there's one restaurant that I will not go to because there's rats going by. That's what you guys need to concentrate, are, in the buildings, because the food trucks won't have that, because they're constantly moving. So if you don't want the food trucks, just say so, and just get them out of town. But all those requirements about the, their car, their blocking, blah, 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 it's uncalled for. Thank you.
Thanks, Darla. The other? Any online? Yep, go ahead.
Mayor, thank you, City Council. Um, my name's Kay Sacksburg, and I'm a member, or, I'm a community member, and I'm just concerned about the food trucks, just because of the small business owners and trying to support Lincoln. I understand they wanna be here, and that's great, but I just don't feel that it's a need. I think that if we have them in McBean Park, maybe for a food truck night, or if they're at the wineries and the breweries, I don't see a problem with that. I just don't like them being downtown and taking away from the local businesses that work so hard to serve our food, and to pay the taxes and pay, to pay what they are required to pay. And I would just like to see it monitored more, and, as the lady said in the back, maybe just not have food trucks in Lincoln, maybe that's what needs to be done. Thank you.
Okay, close public hearing, and bring it back. Comments, questions?
So I just wanted to follow up on the ADA thing. What, if any, responsibility do we have on that front versus the County Health Department that does their licensing of food trucks? How does that all play together?
Each and every business has an obligation to manage their ADA response. Um, I, I have no power or authority to- I have no power or authority to regulate how food trucks are constructed or what level height their windows are at. I think, like Darla indicated, my experience has been when individuals are present in a wheelchair, that they come out and, and present the food to them, much like anywhere else where you have a lowered counter. The food trucks really don't necessarily have that ability to have those lowered food counters. But I'm not an expert in food truck construction, so I will leave that to the experts, but I think that goes well above and beyond what we're able to really regulate as far as, as that goes. Individual business owners have an obligation to accommodate.
Yeah. My only comment on the outline is, the number of hours doesn't, to me, if they're allowed between the period, then they can be there that whole period. And I think getting rid of how many hours they can be there during that day doesn't make much difference to me, so if they want to serve lunch and dinner or be open until the 10:00 p.m. thing, so that doesn't make much, much difference to me. And then I think we have to decide how often they can come, like 72 hours they can come, one every, once every three days, or 48 every two days. But if they're gonna set up and be there and have the owner's permission, I don't see why six hours just feels arbitrary to me if we allow them to be there from 7:00 to 10:00 anyway. That's just my two cents on that. Otherwise, I think the rest of it's a good first step, and obviously we'll have to review and see how it goes once we implement.
Yeah, what? Sorry if you, I apologize if I missed it, but what, what was the six-hour decision? I know why we are implementing a time restriction overall, and I agree with that, but what was the six-hour?
So originally, the, the ordinance that was drafted, that was circulated to DLA in the chamber, had a four-hour every 72 hours. And that came from our research and reviewing other food truck ordinances from other jurisdictions kind of in our region that were cities of similar size and, and impact. And so most of the other jurisdictions have some type of window within the hours of operation that they restrict the hours for the food truck vendor to operate. But, you know, certainly I'm open to Councilmember Reedy's suggestion that if you want to be there from 7:00 to 10:00, that's fine, but you can only be there from 7:00 to 10:00 every three days or whatever, whatever the council thinks is the best first step going forward. Like I said, this is, this is our first shot at trying to regulate this and meet the needs of the community while also meeting the concerns of council and other members of the public.
So to Darla's point, I don't have an interest in just banning food trucks altogether because there are several places that they're very useful to certain businesses, and we have special events and they come in, whatever. I don't, and I'm not trying to limit anybody's ability to make money. And I'm open to the time conversation, that's fine. The problem is, is that I am concerned about the other businesses who pay rent, who brick and mortar, who insurance, all that, and it is a competition for them. And if we don't take some effort to just rein it in a little bit and have some control, then it's just gonna grow out of control, then you're never gonna get your arms around it. And then it will just, they'll be everywhere, and our businesses will suffer, and I just don't think that's fair. So I'm just trying to find a, a fair middle ground here. And I don't think that's unreasonable at all. I think we need to look at what's best for everybody.
Here, one thing we were thinking about, like a good way to think about this, so that you're not kind of creating a them situation, is it's very similar to the rules that we have established for mobile homes, or RVs. Like you could park your RV in your front, there's a time period where you can do it. But most neighborhoods would start to get pretty annoyed if, you know, folks could just park on the public driveway and essentially live there for indeterminate periods of time where everybody else paying property taxes, you know, and all the other things that they do. So it's like sort of an interesting analogy because it's, it's a very similar issue when you have kind of competing businesses trying to sell the same thing to the same people.
And we have had food trucks that actually parked right in front of a competing business and blocked their entrance. So, yeah, that actually does happen and has happened recently, and I feel like we need to protect that.
Right, well, and also, I was gonna say, and I forgot because I was, in my thoughts, but there's the point that Darla made about being open late, which is a good point. So I don't know, I haven't noticed. I think maybe I've seen one, and Darla, you can correct me if I'm wrong, one that's open later. Are there more that are open later? What was that? Yes, no, so are the food trucks that are parking in town, are they open later? I've only seen one. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, what was that, Jason? That are open late? Okay. Yeah.
Are any of those the ones that are not leaving though and cleaning and shutting down in their home code thing?
Well, that, yeah, I don't know. So that's something to look at, the ones that are late, are they parked there permanently? Are they following their guidelines that we need them to follow? I'm, I'm fine with like having that time, like if our restaurants close early, they want to be open later, fine, but we also don't, I want to make sure that they're not competing against our restaurants, and we're also not, it's not making more of a burden on the city. So if we can come to some happy medium, starting with where you started, maybe tweak it a little bit, I'm okay with that.
And we could, currently, the ordinance is written so that they can be open between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. You could extend that to midnight if, if you wanted to, and then also adjust the number of hours per 24-hour period that they're allowed to operate. So I'm open to whatever suggestions the council feels like are reasonable for this first attempt with this ordinance.
The thing that I always look at in making any kind of a decision when it comes to a policy or ordinance comes down to one of two things. As a government, we're tasked with protecting the rights and the property of the individual. And in this instance, you have to look at two sides of that. You have to protect the rights and the property of the, the owner that wants to have the food truck there. We have to protect the rights and property of the business owners that are already down there. We also have to protect the public for, for safety and health issues. And I feel like the beginning of this is, is a great way to start. And as we, whatever we amend to get it started tonight, I'm, I'm in favor of, but we need to start somewhere so that we can keep that going.
Is there any challenges with having it be, for code enforcement? Is there any challenges with it being open until 10:00 versus midnight, or, you know, anything as far as that goes?
There, there are challenges. I mean, our code enforcement officers, we don't have an officer on staff 24/7.
Right.
But typically speaking, the complaints that we get are, it's complaint-driven, so it's somebody that observes that they're not following the rules, they file a report with the code enforcement division. And one of the things that we're going to do as part of the application is have the property owner specifically state who the food trucks are that are going to be on their property and what their hours of operation are going to be, so that we can hold them accountable for that. So that if we do get complaints that so-and-so's food truck was there for three days and opened until 3:00 in the morning, you know, we, we have somewhere to start and hold the property owner responsible for the violation as well.
Okay, so Councilmember Reedy, what, what language do we need to change in this? Because I see you taking notes over there.
Well, I was just, I was just hearing. So, I mean, if there, I don't think anyone's enforcing a 10:00 or midnight, so I'd be fine with midnight to 7:00 a.m. being the restricted period if there's no logistical challenges with that. And either removing the hour limit per day and just saying, "Look, you can only be in one location every three days," or whatever the proper language is for that, and they can pick what hours that makes sense to them. It's hard for me to, if they really want to do like lunch and dinner, it's gonna be like 10 hours. So either say like 10 hours or just don't have an hour limit, and they just can't be at that location more than once every three days.
Yeah.
Would you prefer the unrestricted hours during the 7:00 to midnight timeframe, or would you prefer a 10-hour during that timeframe?
Midnight?
Because the 7:00 to 12:00 is 15 hours, so...
I mean, the thing is, is that how would you actually enforce it? Because you just like have to go scratch the tire and go back and scratch again.
Where, yeah, I mean, theoretically.
So maybe just take the hours out because it's harder to enforce. Right? If they're there that day, it counts, whether it's for five minutes or 10 hours.
Very good. I can make that happen with that amendment.
So then, we could just make a motion to approve with the changes.
If you'd like to approve the motion with the amendment to change the hours of operation from 7:00 to midnight and the revision.
10 hours.
Yes, sorry, the, the hours that they are allowed to operate are from 7:00 a.m. to midnight, and that the food truck may operate in one location every 72 hours, every three days.
I'll move that.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Great, thank you, Christine, appreciate that. All right, on to general business, 13A. Adopt resolution approving the reclassification of deputy fire chief to the newly established fire chief classification and the adoption of the salary schedule for the newly established fire chief and fire marshal classifications. Hi, Claire.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As the city continues to grow, we're seeing increasingly complex emergency service demands. And in response to these demands, it's essential to have strong leadership structure in place to guide operations, support our community, and strategically plan for the future. With these needs in mind, the first item for your consideration is the reclassification of the deputy fire chief position to fire chief. Appointing a fire chief to the fire department will strengthen the department's leadership, leverage the current deputy's experience and institutional knowledge, and establish a clear path for succession planning. An additional benefit to this change is that replacing the existing public safety chief model with distinct fire chief and police chief roles will provide both departments with focused, specialized leadership tailored to their respective missions. This adjustment reinforces the city's longstanding commitment to public safety and better positions each department to meet the evolving needs of a growing community. Also included, oh, yes, sorry about that. Also included in this proposed restructuring is the incorporation of newly established fire marshal classification, which will enhance the department's focus on fire prevention, including inspections, fire code enforcement, and overall public safety. This dedicated role will ensure the city remains proactive in reducing fire risks, educating the public, and enforcing fire codes, further strengthening our overall approach to public safety. This proposal has no fiscal impact as the costs associated with these changes have already been incorporated into the 25-27 biennial budget. This concludes my report, and I can now answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
My only question is, is Chief Alves getting a titled demotion?
It, it's not a demotion.
Does it technically have to change?
I, I think we probably just make Chief Alves, Chief Alves of the police department only. But you know, as funny as earlier, I was joking with him that really Chief Alves deserves all of the credit for the fire department's work last couple of weeks ago because he still technically is the fire chief. He declined that.
Any comments or questions? Okay, so we'll come back. Oh, is, any public comment on this item? Sorry, got distracted with what I was doing. Any? Yeah. Anybody online? Okay, all right. So I have no questions because we're very excited about this. I know Chief Alves is very excited about this, too. And we've been saying for several weeks now what a, an asset Chief Mejia has been to the city and to the fire department, and a blessing to Chief Alves. And, I mean, I think Chief Mejia has done more presentations than anybody else on staff in the year he's been here. I don't know, but, anyway, we're, I'm going back to what we said earlier with, when he did the fire presentations, like, I'm just so proud of the, the work that you all have done, and this is, this is a really pivotal moment for the city of Lincoln. Like, this seems like a simple item, and we're just making the shift, but this, this is, from where we started, when I was elected, we were sharing fire services with Rockland. And then that ended, and then we, you know, when Chief Alves was promoted, and then we moved him over and all this, and it's just been, you know, a process. And so the fact that we are at this place where Chief Mejia has come on board, working with our department as deputy, and then we're at the place where we can move him into having our own fire chief is, is really, really huge. So congratulations to you. We're so happy to have you. You can never leave us until you're ready to retire in about 25 years.
25 years.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
What we tell everybody.
Yeah. Exactly. No, in all seriousness, very, very grateful, and I'm very happy to vote on this, and let's get this party started.
Move to adopt 13A.
Oh, sure, go ahead. I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Thank you.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Congratulations. And then we're gonna do a swearing-in sometime later, right? We're gonna do a, okay, awesome. Yes, sir. Or you, oh, coming up.
While he's coming up, I'll just answer to the, there's some business things that, that Deputy Chief and I need to finish up, and then as soon as that's completed, ideally the next meeting, so the first one in August, we'll do a...
Mr. Chapman, I think you're, I think you're losing your touch, man, because I already did public comment, and...
I must be.
You must be sleeping over there, lady.
Somebody's gonna have to tap me on the shoulder or something every 15 minutes.
Yes, but you're welcome to make, you're welcome to make a comment.
We'll even figure out whether I'm still breathing over there. No, my, my only comment is simply this, Chief Alves, where does the pooch go?
Oh, he'll, he'll stay with me, but he'll still be a joint police and fire dog, so...
I just wanted to bring that up because that, you know, it, no, you probably want to get another one, or it's just gonna be going around, but anyway, congratulations to both of them.
Yeah, no, Mattis makes his rounds, and he's, he's a, he's a great public safety dog. Awesome. Okay. Yay, that's exciting. Okay, and then we're gonna have item 13B, 84-acre master developer R.I.P., Ms. Frye. Yay. Bye.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm excited to be here. Erin Frye, economic development and communications specialist. I bring to you this evening what I hope for you is a very exciting project for the future of our development of city-owned property here in the city of Lincoln, specifically as it relates to property next to the airport, which we've affectionately referred to in the past as the 84 acres, and tonight we'll be referring to as the Lincoln Airport Business Park. This project is so exciting and so impactful, and I'm sure Sean can add far more detail based on the work he did before my arrival in terms of being able to market this property. But this is an exciting property that we haven't really had much traction on based on efforts historically, whether that be efforts from our partners throughout the Sacramento region with GSAC, Sean's work before my arrival, as I mentioned, and even economic development efforts in years past. This property is exciting, and I'll show you some images here on the next slide. Due to its size, its ownership of the city here, and its location adjacent to the Lincoln Regional Airport and other key infrastructure corridors, this aligns directly with our city's Economic Development Strategic Action Plan for employment generating uses in sectors, as I'll explain tonight, in the areas of aviation, clean energy, and advanced manufacturing. The project site, as you can see on your screen, highlighted in the yellow, is two city-owned parcels totaling just over 84 acres. It's adjacent, as I mentioned, to the Lincoln Regional Airport and our own corporation yard, and is zoned for light industrial uses. In addition, this project location allows Lincoln to leverage our unique regional advantages as it relates to potential advancements in aviation and clean energy while building on momentum that already exists through the greater Sacramento area as we continue to evolve into a hub for zero emission technology, research and development, and advanced manufacturing. In addition, with proximity to Highway 65, this site is ideally positioned to attract industries that bring long-term jobs and fiscal sustainability to Lincoln, and our city is well-equipped for this type of strategic industrial growth. We remain one of the fastest-growing cities in the region with ideal housing options, highly-ranked schools, a diverse workforce, and an abundance of recreational opportunities, which are factors that are not only important for attracting businesses, but the vital employees needed to equip them. So we have a two-phased approach that we're bringing to you this evening. To make this effort as market-aligned and competitive as possible, we're proposing to release a request for information initially. we're proposing to release a request for information initially. This will allow us to solicit industry feedback, assess interest, and refine the final RFP based on real-world insight. We're also planning a virtual pre-bid conference during the RFI window to walk prospective developers through the opportunity and answer their questions directly. We feel that transparency on this issue due to the lack of the interest in the past is critical based on the infrastructure that already exists, potential hurdles, and also custom incentives that we can offer as a city. Once the RFI responses are in, we will issue a formal RFP inviting master developers to submit comprehensive concepts and proposals that include site plans, financial strategies, and infrastructure delivery. Ultimately, the goal is to enter into a development agreement to fully activate this site that is set empty for so long in a number of phases over the coming years. So tonight, I'm excited to recommend that City Council approve the release of the initial RFI and subsequent RFP. We believe this proactive and market-savvy approach to ensure the site's successful activation is a key step to advance this priority economic development initiatives. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Erin. Another pivotal moment for Lincoln. Sean, I have one question because I think I missed the meeting. Did you meet with that consultant firm that GSAC sent out and walked the property and all that? Or how did that go?
Yeah. Turned out to be not what I thought. I, I thought, I misinterpreted the meeting to think that they were gonna be trying to sell us services towards, towards this effort, which is, we get, like, everybody in this room probably gets dozens of those kinds of solicitations every day. So I wasn't like, to be honest with you, in the beginning, I wasn't overly thrilled about the meeting. But we had it, and that's not at all what they do. They actually represent the industrial/commercial corporations that look for these kinds of opportunities. And they're the ones that put together the proposal, proposals that you will see. And so it was a really worthwhile, first of all, they're super experienced, they have a lot of, they really like the site. They do a lot of work out of the port of Portland, which also has an airport kind of component. And so they had a lot of suggestions. One of the suggestions that they gave that we've already filtered in was to do this RFI process that Erin has put together because they said, you know, a company that's really interested in this is gonna spend upwards of six figures just putting together the proposal for your consideration. No, you know, not necessarily they're actually gonna get it. So they're gonna invest a ton of time, effort, and money in this. And you might not get such a great response if they don't have the opportunity to come and meet with you, understand the site, see whether or not it makes sense for them before they choose to pull the trigger on spending those kinds of resources to, to, to apply. So we kind of talked about it internally and agreed that that's probably the best way to cast, cast the broadest net. But I will say, so, and, and in fact, I'll also share that they're, they were not interested in, aside from just giving some friendly advice, being involved at all because they likely, they don't want to conflict themselves out. They want to be able to, to compete potentially for this. So that was really, really exciting. Secondly, the other thing Erin didn't get a chance to mention that I will, is before she came on board, we had identified that this was kind of our opportunity site. We don't really have any other light industrial land in city limits of any size that's ready to go. It just happens we own it. So we have had interest over my time here from a couple of different large companies that everybody in this room would know their names of, that were snooping around trying to figure out if it was the appropriate location, and it just never bit. We had a few people actually visit, and we toured the site and had some preliminary negotiations for a variety of reasons, we just have challenges, they're different than other places. But the assessment that I think she and I both made was that we just haven't cast a wide enough net, and we haven't taken control of the process. We can either, it's like, if you owned a piece of land that you wanted to sell, and you just put a sign up and say for sale, or maybe you get a real estate agent and they kind of put it on some website, you might get somebody, you might not. It's not really an active, this is, we've been offered millions of dollars for this property numerous times from what we would call uses that are substandard to our aims here, you know, mini-storage and stuff like that, right? So we know there's value in it, it's just getting it to the right kinds of people. So those sectors that she talked about, what you'll see as we go out is, we're gonna spend money, and we're gonna get them into the appropriate publications. It's gonna be on some websites, including our bidding website, they're widely available to everybody. And then, you know, after it's been out for enough time and we think that we have enough of a robust response, so there's a real competition for it, it'll be the proposer's responsibility to wow you and the community and say, you know, what are you going to bring for this asset? And, and we have a unique opportunity here because we own it. The council can make some very interesting business decisions that might be different from a private property owner that's just trying to get the absolute maximum return. You can take a broader view. Maybe we take a little less money, but we get a much better user that's gonna provide employment. So she has worked for a long time on this and has really formed something that I think is, is likely to bear fruit. And what we've been doing hasn't been working, so figured that this is.
Good, well, we're excited, well, yeah. So that was my understanding that, that it was McKenzie Firm, right, that came out, that, that their goal was to help us get ready for this. So I'm, I'm glad that worked out really good, awesome. Well, any questions or comments? Well, any public comment on this item? Yes, Jason, coming up.
Byron, this would be the time to come and comment, by the way. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. It's possible I was looking at the map wrong because that's, you know, wouldn't be the first time. But I, like, that property, I think, has, has been used for like parking for airport events and the Christmas tree disposal, and a third thing that I had until I walked up here. But are there plans to, for, the parking especially for like the airport events and the Christmas tree thing?
So, yeah, it's funny that you mentioned that because Councilmember Pearl, who's not here this evening, who's, you know, is all things airport, he brought that up almost right away. Well, what are we gonna put all the people, you know, for, for the events? And we, one of the cool things about having ownership of it is I could imagine a scenario where we get some really awesome business that wants to relocate here, and we work a negotiation with them, say, hey, listen, we have events here, you're gonna presumably build very large, professional, fully-improved parking lots, can we work out scenarios where a few times a year we're able to use, use the land? I don't think that part's an issue at all. We also have a tremendous amount of real estate north of that, of the airport where Matt's office is, et cetera. So we have some options for, for alternatives there. The other thing is, I tend to doubt that when this, when this project builds out, I don't think it's gonna be an 84-acre build-out. I suspect it'll be, you know, in tranches of 20, you know, 15 acres at a time or 20 at a time. So, so, yeah, it's, it's a good point because it is kind of something, if we're gonna continue to have events out there, we have people to go.
Good question, Jason, thank you. All right, Mr. Chapman, do you have a question or comment? No, you're good this time, okay, awesome, good. Anybody online? Okay, closed public comment. Yeah, well, I think, again, long time coming, really appreciate all the work, Erin, that you've put into this. And I'm very excited about this process and what it can mean for Lincoln revenue-wise and moving forward, so. That's awesome. We'll, we'll make that allowance. Yeah, no. No, yep. All right, well, I'll take a motion to approve.
I motion to approve.
Oh, it's no, oh, you're just wanting, it's just direction. Yeah, 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 it's just direction, yes. But I wanted to vote on this because I've been like, no, I'm just, thank you, Erin, yes, yes. It's very exciting, very, very good. Awesome, okay, moving forward, awesome.
Love it.
Okay, City Manager reports.
Yes, thank you. Just glitched for a second, I think it's a little later. The only update I have is to share that the Placer County Charter Review Committee, and if you don't know what that is, Placer County operates, so Lincoln's a general law city, we follow kind of a prescribed set. Roseville, on the other hand, is a charter city, they have their own sort of set of special rules that they've created. Placer County similarly is a charter county. And so every so often, they do a charter update, basically rewriting the governance and other rules that they live by. And it's super important, and honestly, a lot of the time, it's one of those things that kind of just flies under the radar because it's obscure and complex. But they are meeting, excuse me, next Tuesday, the 29th, at 6 o'clock. And so to encourage residents that are interested, I think there are Zoom options. If you go to their website, you don't actually have to go in person, you can, you can log on and watch it. I think it's on YouTube as well. But we're trying to flag these things that are occurring regionally, especially as it relates to Placer County. You know, they're going through a general plan update right now. These are decisions that matter. You live in Lincoln, but you also live in Placer County, right? So like, they, they are like an umbrella over us to provide a lot of services. And so it's super important that people at least are tracking that stuff. So we're gonna try to keep that up to speed. And I probably have other things, but you know what, I think I'll just let it be unless there's any specifics council wants me to mention.
That's what I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up, just to put it out there. It's at 3715 Atherton Road in Rockland at the Placer County Clerk and Quarter's Elections Office, again, on Tuesday, the 29th, at 6.
Yeah, it's right across from.
Right across from Jessica.
Yeah. Define.
Yeah, I think we're all gonna go.
Awesome. All right, is there any council-initiated business? Felt like I had something, but it.
Well, it was kind of a, a little random thing that City Manager Scully and I were talking about. I had a constituent that reached out and asked if there was any tennis walls in Lincoln. And if not, that was something that maybe we could integrate into Phase 2 of Bella Breeze Park. But we were thinking that there might already be one at.
A tennis wall, like they hit the ball on the wall?
Yeah, so like for the singles to be able to go play on a wall.
At Jimenez?
I don't think so, no.
There's not?
I don't think there is.
No, it's just tennis courts.
Yeah, I, I was telling Whitney, I was telling Councilmember Eklund, I drive by that every, almost every single day, and I feel like I might have seen somebody out there by themselves hitting, but I don't think there is a wall there.
Just made it up.
I must have made it up, or I manifested it. But I did talk with, with Doug in Parks about it, and then also engineering. And so we're gonna be able to have, there's a lot of room, especially at Bella Breeze, but also Jimenez too, for that matter, in, in one of those phases to have that. And I think it's pretty reasonable just given, there's a swing to pickleball, but, you know, kind of feels like that'll be a thing for a long time, but it also will swing back at some point to tennis too. So I think it's reasonable, and not very expensive, honestly.
Yeah, we're thinking it might not be that expensive. And then I wanted to get an update or find out if there's any new happenings with the light, Sierra College and Tall Bridges, and we were talking about that a little bit earlier. We had any updates with county?
We do have a brief update. We checked in with Placer County, and they are, they reviewed a preliminary design concept, and they provided comments back to the developer who was gonna revise their plan and provide a preliminary conceptual cost estimate for both intersections. So we're just awaiting to receive that information to further discussions with Placer County as well as PCTPA.
So they might have already done the design then, does that mean it, they don't have to do?
It would just be conceptual at this point.
Okay, they still have to do the design. Trying to understand a timeline, and I think I, I think one of us asked for a timeline, and it was still kind of vague.
Next summer, maybe.
Yeah, that, that was right.
Matt and I have been trying to stay on top in coordination with county staff. You know, we've been pushing them, and each time Matt would tag one of their senior staff, and we would get a response. I think what they're trying to do is give the developer, big for developer, the first option, the first opportunity to design and build improvements. And we're, we've been keeping PCTPA in the loop as far as trying to advance our project, you know, this particular project at Tall Bridges. We made it clear that's our top priority, and, and the county staff seems to be supportive as well. And I mentioned this to Sean, that, you know, our representative on the PCTPA board, it probably wouldn't hurt to, to bring that up with PCTPA staff about, hey, when we're, when are we gonna address the safety issue over, I mean, most of the work will be in county right away. So, so Tall Bridges is within the city limits, and, and that leg of the street does approach Sierra College Boulevard. But unfortunately, it's, you know, most of the work.
I have engaged with PCTPA staff and Sparta, both on that same subject.
And PCTPA is very supportive, and we believe there's funding available that could be advanced forward.
And I think that'll come with, between Sparta and the developer together as we make an agreement to put that together. PCTPA is not meeting tomorrow, it'll be in August, so other than personal conversations, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I have.
Awesome. Okay, and then the last thing that I had a question about, I have, again, I tried to find this back in the minutes, and I don't remember, but I do know that I either asked our city manager or asked Ben if there, and it might have been just a sidebar conversation, if there was any way to create safe crossing between, I had a group of, of walking ladies ask me about crossing Tall Bridges from the backside of Verdara to that trail that we were just talking about with Tony Frazier's, GMC's trail. Like, you have to, you know, dart across four lanes. Is that anything that is possible? And I don't remember what, what we were discussing or where we got with that.
I, I think that was the two of us talking, the idea, I haven't talked to you about it yet, Ben, but the idea I had is, is traffic committee takes a look.
I think it did go through the traffic committee.
Oh, okay.
And, and the recommendation was due to the high speeds, they don't recommend putting in a crosswalk. Now, yeah, it's, it's challenging when, when infrastructure like that is put in with development, especially when there's hills involved. I mean, the reality is, if you put in, sometimes you put in a striped crosswalk, it, it gives a pedestrian a false sense of security. And if they don't pay attention when they, when they cross, you know, we don't want a collision between vehicle going 40, 40 miles an hour downhill, hitting a cyclist or a pedestrian trying to cross. You know, I can ask the committee, the monthly traffic committee, to take a look at it, to see if they come up with some suggestions. But, you know, typically, when you're trying to come back and, and make improvements after the streets are built, it often requires a, you know, major capital investment, like a roundabout or signals or head signals or something like that.
Probably the only thing, because there isn't any way to cross that's not that, without going, you know, I don't know how many hundreds of yards to get down to the end of either side of those streets to be able to cross in a more safe area. Yes.
Yeah. So I'll ask the committee to look, to look at it and come up with possible low-cost capital projects.
There is one, but it sounds like there might not be.
So like to, I know we don't want to go too deep on this, but to put a finer point on it, are you saying essentially that if you were, if we were just resolved that we have to find a pedestrian pathway across the roadway there, the way to do it is that we're gonna have to create some sort of traffic improvement to slow traffic, yeah?
Yeah, the challenge is if, you know, we can't put in always stops everywhere. It becomes very dangerous when you put in always stop and people know that, you know, cross traffic, they'll just run it. And it becomes a very dangerous situation when that happens. Which is why stop signs require traffic warrants to justify whether, you know, you have sight distance issues, you have so many pedestrian crossings, how much delay is involved for a pedestrian to get from one side to the other? You have to justify it and document it, you know, where to put in the stop signs.
Can't just throw them wherever you want.
Exactly.
That makes sense. I, I knew that there was information, I appreciate that. All I had.
I, it's honestly business, but I wanted to just point out a couple of things and just say thank you. The first one is, I wanted to, and I'm glad you're still sitting here, I wanted to thank Kim. I wanted to thank, um, Kim, our code enforcement officer, um, and Sean and Christine and the staff, all the work that you've done on cleaning up the alleyways and the graffiti and working with the residents. And I think we're still working on some kind of, you know, and, and also PD for patrolling more and all of that, trying to mitigate the, you know, taggers coming along and, and graffitiing people's fences and they have to repaint them over and over again. And I think we can still find some kind of middle ground to where we're not wholly responsible, but they're not being frustrated over and over again by taggers. But the staff going out, cleaning up the particular alleyway, you know, cutting down the weeds, Kim working with the residents, I think we're in a much better place. And, and I really wanted to say I appreciate the work on all sides very much. Um, and we'll keep working on that, but that was a, you know, a lot of, a lot of back and forth and I, I just want to say thank you for that. And then also, on the first fire that we talked about, um, where houses were evacuated, I had a resident, who's actually, the gentleman who called me, he's actually on our park and rec committee and they've been, I've known them for years, but which is beside the point. But anyway, he called me and when the fire first happened, he was telling me how scary it was for them and that, you know, they were upset about that the field hadn't already been like chopped down like it should be. And then people were commenting about, why aren't the goats out there? And I'm like, well, it's, we don't own it. It's developer-owned. Um, but that particular developer came to their house and talked to the neighbors. And then he called me again today and he said, they're going to do everything that they need to do. They're going to make sure the fire breaks are done. They're going to whatever, and you probably know more than I do. But he was very grateful. And I said, well, this particular developer usually, you know, will do the right thing. And, and, and so I just wanted to point that out, that, um, the residents are happy over there. That's getting taken care of. I mean, they should have already done it to avoid the fire in the first place, but thankfully, it got put out fast enough. But anyway, I just wanted to point out that they are taking care of it and the residents are happy. And so he called me and he's like, I just want you to know. And he goes, and I told him, you need to make sure you do it every year until the houses are built so this doesn't happen again. And he goes, I think they will. And I go, I'm, I'm sure they'll keep their word. So that, that was a happy ending to that, you know, little near disaster. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to say thanks for all of that. And then do you guys have any business or you want to go on to committee reports? It's, July has been quiet for all my, I did, I did fill in for you at the Sheridan Mac. Yeah, and that was, that was, uh, it was great to go back. Um, I might tag along with you for now because I, I love it out there. But, um, anyway, so just give them a little update and they're great people out there at Sheridan. So, but not a lot of committees are meeting right now. I know you're really busy, but everyone usually takes July off and.
Went to Watma, the landfill, and they released an RFP for the, a new LNG facility where they'll convert the land gases to LNG to give, sell back to PG&E. So that RFP's out now.
Okay.
Major.
Awesome. Um, and then for information, I just wanted to let everybody know that doesn't already know that Dan Carleskin's Celebration of Life is this Saturday at 2 o'clock at, uh, the Colaga Lodge and one of the rooms there, and it'll be easy to find anyway. So, um, I, I was going to say, I'm looking forward to that. I'm not looking forward to that. Um, I spoke to his son briefly today because I sent some pictures for his slideshow. Um, but, um, and then Richard, or Councilmember Pearl is helping put it on, but, you know, he's recovering right now. So I just said, if there's anything we can do to help with, you know, let us know. But, um, anyway, so just wanted to let everybody know that if they wanted to attend. And then I think, I think that's it. Anybody have any other information? Nope. Anybody else? Is that it? All right. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.